Good evening. It's 6:07. I'm calling to order the Placerville Planning Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Would you all please join me in reciting the alleged, uh, Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Ms. Watkins-Howey, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Stratton?
Here.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Here.
Vice Chair Lepper?
Here.
Chair Keeney?
Here. Full house tonight. Thank you. Tonight, we have no closed session reports. Next, we move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote or unless any member of the commission or staff or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. Would anyone like to remove either 4.1 or 4.2 from the consent calendar?
I had one addition I'd like to make to the minutes.
For?
For August...for both, actually.
Okay, you would like to pull both 4.1 and 4.2?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's move on to five so we can discuss your changes or amendments. Let's start with, yeah, 4.1 is from Tuesday, July 15th, 2025.
Great. They're very minor, but I just think they help for clarification. On the July 15th ones, I want to propose that under 11.1 MACNA, we update it to say a motion was made to approve the extension by Chair Keeney and seconded by Commissioner Smith. In a roll call, the motion was approved.
Could you repeat that?
Yes.
I just called up to you. A motion was made?
Sorry. Was made to approve the extension. Yeah, just to, for clarification, that that was the motion by Chair Keeney and seconded by Commissioner Smith. In the roll call, the motion was approved.
Extension, okay. Anything else on, from July 15th?
No.
Okay. Let's go ahead and, any other changes from other commissioners? Let's focus on 4.1 for right now. Any other changes?
I have none.
Okay. All in favor of, oh, do I need them? Do I need a motion for that, or can we just do a general consent on this?
We can do general consent.
Okay. Also, anyone from the audience care to comment on the changes or any of the, this is an updated version from July 15th. Good evening. Okay. Ms. Kendrick, how would we comment on that or add that to the minutes?
It's actually in the August 19th on page one. It's items pulled from the agenda, number five, and it's the second sentence that indicates Michael Drobish wanted the minutes to reflect that he was not allowed. Okay, so we can, we can add that in. 4.1.
Well, let's, let's just, I think we should postpone our decision on this and perhaps go one more round to reflect this in another version of the minutes from July 15th. I think that's what I'd prefer to do. Let staff have time to work on the appropriate language and insert that as needed.
Unless the commission is, would entertain just using the language that's in the August 19th that said Michael Drobish wants the, well, we can...
That was my, gonna be my next one for the August 19th was to clarify that he was not allowed to provide public comment by the chair due to a lack of proper agendization on the July 15th meeting. And I think that covers it sufficiently. That's my, that was my take on it.
We could make the changes as amended and you could move forward or you can direct staff to come back.
I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Could you repeat that, please? I'm sorry.
We could make the recommendations that Commissioner Lepper made and you could act on it tonight. Or if you'd like staff to come back at our next meeting and have clean minutes, we can do that as well. It's, it's up to the planning commission on how they'd like to proceed.
Okay, let's, all right. What's the wish of the rest of the commission?
I personally think that they are fine the way they are with the clarification on the August 19th that he made the comment and it was due to a lack of proper agendization.
Okay, so you noting that it exists without any other changes. Okay, to the August 19th.
My hearing aids might not be working clearly, but what's the objection to the language?
Which one?
You just, I believe, referenced in number five for August 19th, public comment, Michael Drobish wanted the minutes to reflect that he was not allowed to provide public comment by the chair, yada, yada, yada.
Right. I just thought that adding "due to a lack of proper agendization" put a little bit more context in there. Not that he just wasn't allowed to speak, but that he wasn't allowed to speak because it wasn't properly agendized.
Okay, um, yeah, I guess we're just gonna go ahead and talk about both 4.1 and 4.2 then. I'd hope to take them in order. So, 4.2 is the next meeting, and so you have an amendment for that due to improper agendizement?
Agendizement, agendiz, I don't know which the proper word is. I don't know...
Any one of the Thesaurus dictionary?
Since, in the...
How about unclear, improper, unclear?
Yeah, unclear, I think, because we also don't talk about even anything I talked about. It was kind of like made null when we realized it wasn't agendized.
Right.
So I think referencing that in the minutes and not everything else is kind of not aligned. So, I'm, that's why I said, I propose that the July 15th, we just update to approve the extension for the MACNA Hotel, leave as is. And then, to clarify, because when I read it, the August 19th ones, I thought that adding context to it rather than just stating he wasn't allowed to speak would clarify it for the record.
Okay. Mr. Drobish, would you like to respond to that? Okay.
Okay.
No further comments from the public, so I'll bring it back to commissioners. Everyone okay with those two changes for both? Let's see. So, note, a slight change, right, under 11.1 for July 15th and then clarification for August 19th. Anything else for August 19th now that we're talking about both of them?
No.
Any other changes?
No.
Okay, and that was our, all right. Ms. Watkins-Howey, or do we just, do we need a motion? Now, I want to, we just do it by general consent. Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Good. Got through that. Don't think we've ever had to do two sets of minutes with two changes. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with me on that. I always do this. Okay, I'm gonna put this set of papers over here. Sorry to Alyssa. I'm just like, you know, you're gonna be off the dais before I'm done. All right. So, we've, moving on to number six. Items of interest to the public, public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for people wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda, and the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. State law prohibits the commission from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the planning commission under specified circumstances. Would anyone in the audience care to speak to something that is not on our agenda tonight? Welcome back to the podium. I'm, I don't know what's wrong with my ears tonight, but please speak into the microphone, Mike.
Are we now in control of our own button here? Because it was...
No, it's on.
I just now turned it green.
Where's the microphone?
Brand new to me. Anyway.
I think you just need to, yeah, lean in a little bit.
Couple meetings ago, the market, right up the street, the nice, you know, very old painted black building, came and asked for string lights for, actually, they specifically asked for security reasons. And I think roughly speaking, like, half of the lights were deleted by the planning commission. And then, it wasn't very long ago, week, week and a half, something like that, they were broken into. Somebody smashed a window, stole lots of stuff. And I was just, you know, just kind of sad that they asked specifically for security reasons and then this happened to them. So, and, but personally, I don't, I think having to do a special permit on string lights is a little ridiculous when they're just plug-in lighted cords. So, anyway, just FYI.
Thank you. Yeah, that is a, it's really sad. We had a long discussion and maybe, I can't remember if you were here for that meeting or not, Mike, but we talked about the, the string lights are architectural or decorative. And, yeah, some concerns were expressed about security. And we talked about how string lights aren't security lights. And if, if they have a security problem, that's, you know, they need to add that. I had noticed, passing by, that Nextdoor Sweetie Pie's, they did have a security light up there. So, you know, it was the feeling, general feeling of the commission that you can't have those string lights serve all those purposes. And so, that was, you know, we discussed it with the applicant, and they agreed at that time. They, you know, didn't tell us of, like, a specific threat and, but it is unfortunate that they were broken into. And I, you know, I welcome them to come back or, you know, I don't know if that's something that staff can take care of administratively if they want to add security lights. But, you know, we've talked about this. It was an element for the sourdough and company. They had, they came to us with a string proposal for string lights and security lights. And, you know, we discussed that thoroughly and approved all of that, that whole package. But, the El Dorado Market just came to us with string lights. And we also talked about how, you know, security lights are up on, away from where they can be tampered with. The string lights are just kind of down there, can be easily tampered with. But, that's the way I remember it. Anyone else want to respond to the comment from public?
Yeah, that's the way I remember it as well. And I remember asking if she would need an additional permit for a security light, and they said no. So, staff said no.
Could just be, I don't even know if they, maybe, building...
It's just already allowed.
Needs to give them a, I don't know how that would work, but they don't have to come back to the planning commission for security.
I would have to double check on that, but I will reach out to the business tomorrow.
Thank you. And...
I guess the question to have, as I heard the term used a few minutes ago, security lights. What constitutes a security lights? Isn't any light able to serve the function of security? For example, we have illumination here and that provides security. Somebody can't come in and cause destruction because we at least know about it. Number one. Number two is that there were three string lights displayed in that photograph that was provided. They were approximately in distance, the first set was about 10 feet or less, the second one was about 30, and the next about 150. All had the same amount of illumination, the same kind of bulbs. But, the other two were existent, and common logic might tell us that those lights closest to the camera would necessarily be the brightest. So, they weren't any brighter, although they were described as garish, than the other two sets, which also provided security because it illuminates the area. When a police officer is driving by, how are they gonna be able to see in that dark area? Any light that is there would help. But, instead, the discussion focused on signage, providing a little bit, that was mentioned a number of times, signage, but that's not in the regulation. The regulation only had one issue, which was security or safety.
Alyssa has her mic on. Go ahead and...
And excuse me, commission, again, this, this particular item is not agendized, item's not on the agenda, so we can respond briefly and direct them to staff. So, I'll, I'll definitely reach out to the business owner. And then, if any of you want to contact me to provide me further background, I'm, I'm happy to talk with you.
Thank you for that. And so, if any other commissioners have concerns, just direct them to staff and take it from there. Thank you. No other members of the public wishing to comment at this time. We'll move on to seven written communications on non-agenda items. We don't have any of that. And so, now we'll move on to eight presentations and educational workshop sessions. Don't have any of those. Moving on to nine, environmental assessments, public hearings, public meetings. First is 9.1 Conditional Use Permit, 2503, a variance, 2501, Master Sign Plan, MSP 2501 for Home Depot and Home Depot Tool Rental Center. And I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Kendrick, for the staff report.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I'm presenting the Home Depot Tool Rental Center project located at 600 Placerville Drive. That includes CUP 2503, variance 2501, and master sign plan 2501. I'll give you an overview and analysis, then take questions before the public hearing. The applicant Lars Anderson and Associates for Home Depot USA Inc. requested a conditional use permit for an internal tool rental center in addition to using 10 parking stalls for equipment rental display and six additional spaces for truck rental. They're also asking for front sidewalk sales, a rear staging area, and seasonal sales, including Christmas trees with an annual temporary use permit. They're also seeking a variance to reduce the required parking to 357 stalls and a master sign plan amendment to add three-foot channel letters and placards, increasing the aggregate sign area from 495.5 square feet to 530. The site is 17 acres. It's zoned commercial, and it has a commercial general plan land use designation. The site does host a 120-square-foot store. That store was approved in 2003 under Site Plan Review 02-04, requiring 361 stalls with 391 stalls provided, based on three stalls per 1,000 square feet. Current code requires full four stalls per 1,000 feet, or, in this case, 484 stalls. The application submitted on May 6 and revised on July 3 of this year addressed staff concerns about site plan accuracy and parking and included adding the variance at a later time. The site is bounded by Placerville Drive to the north, commercial uses to the east, and residential open space to the south and west. This project involves no major changes, just restriping for the angled parking in the rental areas and providing fencing around the truck rental and equipment rental. The Tool Rental Center is for rental of tools from drills to power equipment. It will be operated by staff. The equipment rental use uses 10 stalls with locked trailers and no onsite repairs handled onsite. Truck rental uses include six stalls for 12- to 26-foot box trucks with transactions inside and no fueling or maintenance onsite. Front sidewalk sales will display barbecues, furniture, and plants, maintaining a four-foot ADA walkway. The rear staging allows for a 72-hour storage, deliveries during business hours, and seasonal sales occupy 20 stalls from March 1st to July 31st and November 15th to December 31st, with Christmas trees needing an annual permit, all Home Depot operated. It is consistent with the commercial general plan designation. It does enhance retail per the land used element goal C, and with zoning ordinance section 10-4-4 for the conditional use permit, meeting setbacks height and ADA standards. The parking study that was provided used four comparable sites that included Moreno Valley, which is in Southern California, and I'm very familiar with that site because it's not terribly far from my, where I live. And they did a location in Granberry, Texas, and then two in Phoenix. They do show a peak Saturday demand of 1.41 stalls per 1,000 feet, or about 170 stalls. Supporting the variance under section 10-3-5A, due to the big boxes format, lower demand and original approval ratio. The master sign under section 10-4-17 increases the signage to 530 square feet aggregate, exceeding the code max by 331 square feet, but allows for flexibility in coordinating design if aesthetically justified placement will be set at permit stage. It's CEQA exempt under sections 15061B3 and 15301 for no significant impact. Public notice was sent out on August 20th to the owners within 300 feet, and it was published, published in the Mountain Democrat. Staff have not received any comments to date. The commission, the commission's authority comes from sections 10-3-1C for the conditional use permit, 10-3-5 for variances, and 10-4-17 for the master sign plan, all requiring a hearing. Findings support the conditional use permit, no environmental impacts, general plan and zoning consistency, public benefit, adequate parking, and CEQA exemption. For the variance, special circumstances, no privilege, no harm with 357 stalls exceeding the 170 peak demand demonstrated by the applicant and general plan alignment. For the master sign plan, ordinance compliance with flexibility, aesthetic consistency, and no impacts. This time, staff would recommend holding a public hearing and taking testimony with three potential options. Is to approve all the applications with the proposed conditions of approval and direct staff to file a notice of exemption filing. Option two is to continue to a future meeting for more information, or three, to deny one or more if unsupported. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And we did pass out an exhibit that was provided by one of the members of the public. So, I'm happy, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have now before we open the public hearing.
Thank you. There's a lot going on here with this particular item tonight. And since you mentioned the submittal, that was something I had, I just wanted to go on the record, if you would, kind of walk us through. Again, for the record, this map that we were provided with tonight, the, there's coating of pink and, and yellow. Would you just go ahead and clarify what those signify?
So, a member of the public went and did a inventory today, and so, my understanding is pink is areas that are being used for storage currently, and that the yellow are special use parking spaces. I'm sure the resident can explain in more detail his, his analysis and research on this.
Thank you. I just wanted to, kind of get us oriented to the submittal, and we'll go into that in more detail as we proceed. I just, again, for clarification, I want to make sure I understand that tonight regarding the, first, the parking, that the number of spaces provided will be 357, and then of those, 300, 357, then 36 will be reserved or dedicated for the other uses, including the seasonal sales, storage, and the truck rental, and so on. So, that leaves us a net of 321 parking stalls available at the site. Just want to make sure my math, my margin math is correct. I'm sorry? I was waiting for her to respond. Did you have a comment about that?
Catherine did the math.
Or did you, did you do the math, too?
Well, in, in the parking analysis that was part of, that was included, the 357 stalls includes the 20 seasonal sales stalls, the accessible parking and the pro parking, and then the equipment rental, these additional stalls that they're requesting to be designated for other, for the equipment rental are in addition to the 357.
Good question. I, I was going off the staff report this, since this is, although this is included, incorporated by reference.
It, it's actually attached to the staff report, so it's the parking analysis, and it's item number nine that says parking management. The applicant shall maintain a minimum of 350 parking stalls, including designated areas for equipment rental, totaling 10 stalls, truck rental, including six stalls, and seasonal sales, 20 stalls. The applicant shall submit an annual parking utilization report to the city by March 1st of each year, documenting peak period demand to verify compliance with the, the variance if approved.
Can, can you say again where that was that you just read? Because I know I made a written comment for myself and I can't find it.
Actually, it's condition number nine.
So, when, I guess I actually had a comment to correct this, because I don't think this is presented correctly in the conditions. So, we can talk about it when we get to that.
So, yeah, what is, what was your correction, then?
Oh, it's, it's item number 9.1 Attachment D.
The conditions of approval?
Yeah. Number nine.
Number nine, okay.
And I think, was this what you were looking at, and that was what generated your question? So, I think the correct statement would be that the applicant shall maintain a minimum of 357 parking stalls, which includes up to 20 seasonal sales, and the designated areas for the equipment rental, the 10 stalls, truck rental in parentheses, six stalls, and cart corrals, six stalls, shall be in addition to the minimum parking. So, not everything that's listed in the existing text is included, and that 357 actually is based on the parking analysis.
So, then, the number of stalls on the lot would be 393. So, we go, we go up from 357. So, I wanted, just wanted to know what our net, so our net is 357.
So, the, right.
Okay, but on the asphalt, we've got 393. If I'm...
In their analysis, it's 373.
373.
But the, but the 357 includes the 20 parking stalls that would be designated for the seasonal sales. And then, there's also accessible parking...
For the rental and...
Those are not included in the 357.
Okay. My other question about, the staff report is the mention of the, on page four, measures to improve traffic flows such as limiting outdoor storage and opening an additional entrance and exit. Can you tell us more about... Can you tell us more about that access? Is that, it's not included in the conditions of approval. So I was a little, I don't know how, whether that's a good thing or not, but since it's not one of the conditions of approval, I was wondering why, why not, I guess?
And that, that's an oversight. So in the traffic analysis, it does indicate on, it is page three of the traffic analysis, it does state that Home Depot is proposing to open the additional entrance exit to the site for not only truck deliveries, but employees and customers as well. So we can add a condition in that requires that.
Do you know what the traffic concerns are that they, that they note in their parking analysis that are being mitigated by opening up that second driveway?
And if not, that, you know, maybe that's something, we have the applicant's representative here, so maybe Ms. Kendrick, if that's something we should just have them speak to, would that be better?
Well, they can, they can speak to that, but I think that the major concern that staff had originally when this application came in was the amount of storage that was not approved out in the parking lot. And so wanting to make sure that we had an accurate number of parking spaces that are available to customers, especially with this application reducing additional parking, and I know with the storage circulation is a concern on the site, you know, I've driven the site, and so because of all the outdoor storage all around the site, it does make it hard to move through there.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are my questions. Anyone else have a question about the staff report? Go ahead.
I guess my question is, 15 years ago, there was a certain amount of parking spaces made available based on the data that was submitted then, and in the ensuing 15 years, there's been an increase in population and presumably an increase in the amount of traffic into that parking lot. So why would there not be an increase in parking available rather than a decrease? What's the change that would allow for, for there to be a reduction?
What staff has done is brought the information forward. It's really up to the planning commission if they want to move forward approving that variance. Staff is just bringing this application forward, the variance, so the conditional use permit was submitted prior to my employment with the city. After reviewing it, determined that they were deficient on parking based on the proposal, and so they brought the variance in and are making their own justification for that, based on how there are other stores that have similar, of similar size are doing in other areas. So, I mean, it's really up to the planning commission. If the, if the variance is denied, then the conditional use permit can't be approved. And so, like I said, it's really up to the applicant to make that justification, to be able to convince the planning commission that the project would be, work, would be acceptable and have enough parking to support their customers.
So what you're saying, if I understand it, is that it's really up to the applicant to make those choices?
To justify the variance.
The city made a decision about how many would be required 15 years ago. The city made the choice, so wouldn't the city be in a position to make the decision now rather than the applicant?
Well, the applicant's not making the decision. The planning commission is.
So we can actually ask for an increase in parking theoretically?
Potentially, I mean, but, but we would have to look and see if there's a nexus for that. I mean, they are removing parking based on the proposed uses.
The other question is, there's various properties in Placerville where property owners have been required to add solar powered cover for parking, like Marshall Hospital, that provides increased lighting during the darker months and protection from the sun during the summer. So what is it that would trigger that for someplace like Home Depot, if at all? When, when is that going to be applied?
Well, it's an existing site, so I, I can't think of a trigger that would require that because it's existing. If they wanted to come in and propose solar canopies in the parking lot, that's something we would definitely process, but I, because it's an existing developed site, it's fully developed, I don't see where we could require them to do that.
Right.
I thought that's what was done, it was some time ago, but it was for Marshall directly across from the hospital, for the occupational office directly across. That was already in existence, and they were required to add it. They came into the city council, I think it was before you arrived, a number of months ago, and gave a presentation on the parking that they had and how they had added the overhead parking covers.
I'd have to look into that further, but in, in my experience, typically when these sites are developed, like I've worked on a couple different Walmarts where they added in after the fact, it, that is clearly by the applicant's choice and not a requirement of staff, but I can, I can look into the Marshall one and get back to you on that.
The other thing I noticed is that in the 15 years since they were required to have the 357 or whatever number of spaces it is, they've used the existing parking in different ways where they reduce the amount of parking.
Yeah, I think that's, we'll be getting back to that, discuss here on the dais. Kirk, if, I appreciate your questions. I want to keep to the staff report and the application at hand.
That's about the application that's at hand.
Yes.
It is.
Thank you.
It is in front of her, and it's illustrated by the map that you referred to earlier.
So, yeah, we'll discuss this more thoroughly after we've heard from the applicant and from the public and hash this out. Does anyone else have a question about the staff report and the request for the, you know, the variance and the signage and so on?
I do. They might, they might be better directed to the applicant, but I'll ask them now, just in case. So in item 9.1, attachment D, the conditions of approval, it's under 11B. It says that the equipment rental displays in the parking lot shall be secured with locking trailers and bollards and removed during non-operational hours. I just wanted to make sure that that was correct, because I thought that I saw elsewhere that they would actually be stored, the equipment rental would be stored in the designated parking lot spaces.
And maybe we need to tighten that condition up.
Okay.
A little bit, because secured with locking trailers, so making sure the trailers are locked. They do have some bollards that are located on there, but we could, we could clean up that language.
Okay.
Equipment rental displays in the parking lot shall be secured. Oh, within, with locking trail, oh, okay, so the.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, the equipment is stored in locking trailers, so.
Okay, so we'll just, we can, okay. And then my last question is, in the site plan, it looks like there's part of the.
And this is attachment A that you're looking at?
Attachment A, and the site plan.
Page three, yeah.
And then there's sheet two of three, there's details about the rentals center, and it looks like there's outdoor rental display areas identified on the site plan, but I didn't see them described anywhere in the application, so maybe, maybe they're folded in somewhere, but I was just hoping maybe the applicant could speak about that a little bit.
Okay, yeah, I would defer to the applicant.
Any other questions about the staff report?
Yes, because as I read your staff report, one of the options is number two, to actually ask for the item to be continued so that we could explore other options. So I think that the questions I was seeking to ask are relevant, because the allocation of parking that exists now includes, off here on the left, and I'm just going to refer to either map you use, it's the northeast section, there's 15, right now, 15 tough sheds spaces that used to be parking, and so is that the, so can we require them, it certainly seems like we can, to use more efficient space? So this is to put up the fewer sheds and have the rest illustrated by drawings and diagrams, because I'm not sure that's something that they sell every day or every week. The other is up on the same map, which could be any map you look at, but it's the far corner, right now they have a series of cisterns, and most of them are on plats. And so like other objects that they have at Home Depot, they could be stacked on top of each other, because again, cisterns are not things that they sell every day, or frankly, every week, but that would be a more efficient use of space, because in the ensuing 15 years, this space has shrunk, in part because they've added tough sheds, and they've added the use of cisterns that take up a lot of space. So one of the options, I would think, would be number two, is to have them come back with an explanation.
Oh, that's, I think you're getting into some concerns that maybe other commissioners, I know I have the same concern, so I think, Ms. Kendrick, you know, we definitely have some flexibility here in adding some more or defining some existing conditions as presented. So I think Mr. Smith's question, yes, is yes, we do have some flexibility here, but Kirk, I think I'd rather hear from the applicant and take up the discussion. That's not really, you know, at this point, staff has presented their analysis, and your question is, do we have flexibility? And I think the answer is yes, we have flexibility. We can talk about, give suggestions and our preferences when we discuss it after we've taken public comment. So thank you for that. I think I'm hearing some of the same concerns, and so at this time, you have a question?
I do. Hopefully it'll be quick. I was wondering.
Don't feel rosy if you have a question about the staff report.
No worries. If you're aware, are the sheds and the existing, like barbecues and stuff that are out there in, within an existing permit, or is that something that should be added to this?
No, there's only a small area, so on the site plan, the area with the stars, that is what was approved from their 2003 application for seasonal storage.
I see, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I think, yeah, we're all, we have a lot of concerns about this site, so at this time, I'd like to ask the project representative to step up to the podium, please. We have a lot of questions for you, and after you give your presentation, we'll open it up for public comment. So if you would, please state your name for the record.
Yes.
And please speak into the microphone to help us up here.
Is that good? Can you, okay.
Perfect.
My name is Cassandra Permenter, so I am the applicant for this application. I did write down your questions, so I'm going to try to address everything. If I miss anything, please just let me know. So starting with the seasonal sales area and the sheds and everything like that, so originally with this application, we were approved in two different areas with the original site plan. So we had outdoor sales approved along the front apron of Home Depot, that's kind of where we put our barbecues, some of the sheds, the smaller ones, any seasonal items, flowers in front of the garden center, so we were approved for those areas, and then we were also approved for the seasonal sales area. That is during two specific times during the year, that's during their spring sales, and then also during the Christmas trees and the fall events. So those two areas were previously approved on the original site plan. We did carry those areas over onto this plan as well. For the rental, that is in front of the store, so typically with our tool rental centers, moving forward because they are such a high demand, we typically do 15 stalls in the parking lot. We recognize that obviously there needs to be parking for customers and employees, so we cut it down to 10 stalls, and we accommodated additional rental display in front of the tool rental center. So those will be for more smaller items, still hooked up on trailers, but more smaller ones, rather than like the skid steers and stuff like that, that would be in a parking stall. But that way, we're able to accommodate still those 15 pieces of rental equipment, but it's not taking up more space within the shopping center. So that was the intent behind that. Also, still accommodating that four-foot ADA pathway that will still be maintained in front of the tool rental center and in front of the Home Depot front apron as well, so that will be maintained around the building. For parking concerns, so a couple of different things. We did go back and forth with the site plan when we were designing it, so I have not been to the site in person, I do have a meeting with the store manager tomorrow, but looking at the site on Google Earth, there is a significant grade differential on this site. So if you've been to the site, you can see that along the side where we are proposing the tool rental center, there is a retaining wall there. So we actually can't, we wanted to accommodate additional parking in that area, even parallel parking if we could, there's just unfortunately not enough space. So that was something that we were planning on addressing. We did want to accommodate more parking, we were just not able to with that retaining wall. With that, we also looked at accommodating additional parking in the rear. Unfortunately, with the trucks as well, we just don't have enough area to put additional parking in the rear because of the truck radius that we need, so that trucks are able to clear the building, and also emergency vehicles as well. So that was something that was taken into consideration. When we initially brought this application to the planning department, one of the concerns was that we had on the rear access driveway, so that's where our trucks typically go in, there was a sign that said for deliveries only for that access point, and the concerns that we heard from staff was that the main access for employees and customers can get very congested over there, so we suggested opening up that back driveway as well, since it's only utilized during certain times with deliveries, opening that back driveway would help with the congestion with the front driveway. So that was one thing that we were trying to implement to kind of help with the parking and the congestion in that area as well. Exactly, yeah. So it would still be utilized for trucks, and that's their main point of entry to come in, so that way they're not going through the main shopping center area and the main parking lot, but we can also open it up for our employees as well and for customers, just so that way that it's not congested in the main entrance that people usually utilize.
Do you have some sense of when that window would be, when it was closed?
It was closed all the time previously, so our, yeah, so we are going to open it all the time.
Maybe I misunderstood. I thought you said you would open it at certain times.
No, so we, sorry, that was my fault. We are going to keep it open. So as long as there's no trucks in the queuing, like blocking that driveway, which typically doesn't happen, but as long as there's not a truck turning in, then they should be, customers and employees should be fine to utilize that space, because they don't stay there.
So if, let's say a customer, so I'm going to Home Depot, and I want to turn, I'm heading east, and I want to turn into that driveway, how can you assure me that I won't be suddenly, you know, shocked, there's trucks, I won't be able to get through, I have to back up? What can we do to make sure that the public is fully aware, you know, because I don't know when you take deliveries, but if people are in a habit of going that way, then I don't know that we're taking care of the problem of circulation by opening and opening.
Right, I understand. So we can, when I talk to the store manager tomorrow, we can get their delivery schedule and put it in the conditions of approval, if that helps, and just say like when those hours are and when it will be open. Because our truck dock is on the opposite side of the garden center, there shouldn't be any concerns with customers running into those trucks. My point was just saying that. My point was just saying that, you know, if you see a truck turning in, maybe don't use that turn in, just because it's going to take them a minute to turn in and get into the space and everything, but it'll be open and free to use.
I think, I think you're getting a good sense, even though you haven't been to the site yet, getting a good sense of this second entrance. It's steep, narrow, sight lines aren't necessarily that good.
Right.
So I'm, I just want to make sure that the public doesn't get, in a dangerous situation, doesn't get frustrated, that kind of thing, so that if we do make this a condition of approval, it's one that's got a good chance of success. So, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
Well, I have a question along those lines. Was, was the reason that this was dedicated as trucks only, was that part of the original condition of approval, or was that a preference by the applicant?
Let me see, I have the original. So based on what I have, it doesn't look like there were any restrictions on delivery hours. I think this was just something that was put in place previously when we originally put the site plan in, just to give our trucks a main entrance and a main access point, so that way they weren't going through the front of the store and weren't going into that other entry point. But that's just based on what I can see on my end. I don't know if there's something different from the city's standpoint.
Okay. And I'll just speak my personal experience when, if the store opened, I made the mistake of, you know, it seemed logical to me, and then I got over there and saw the signage that, you know, wasn't to be used. So, yeah, signage wasn't all that good for the public, and I think everybody, a lot of people are used to, you know, that that's not readily available. Okay. Please go ahead.
Yeah. With parking with the code, so we did kind of talk about how, you know, there's just significant grade differential and everything with this site, so it's really hard for us to accommodate additional parking stalls with this site. But we, so it was noted that originally for this store, it was approved at a lower parking ratio. So that was one of the things that we discussed with our application. And additionally, sorry, I'm moving my, when talking about parking, because I know there were some questions about the parking count. So with the parking count, we are providing 373 stalls. So that is how many stalls are on-site. That includes our equipment rental, our truck rental, and all of the cart corrals. The seasonal sales was not included in that because people can utilize those stalls when the seasonal sales aren't being utilized by Home Depot. So during those times of year where we're not using it, those parking stalls will be open for customers and employees to utilize those stalls. So when seasonal stalls, or seasonal sales is in session at Home Depot, there are 357 stalls available for the public.
So if I understand, what you're telling us is that there's not the ability to pave more space and create more parking to meet that newer rate, but-
Correct.
You can accommodate the stalls that were required when the project was first built?
That is correct. So with our original site plan approved, the fifteenth, I'm sorry, April 15th, 2003, it was a parking demand of three stalls for a thousand square feet. So originally, we were required to provide 361 stalls with the site plan. With the plan we are providing today, when seasonal sales are in session, we have 357 stalls available to the public. So yes, we are requesting a little bit of a variance based on our original approval, but it is, it would be very difficult to accommodate, to meet the code today for the additional stalls, just with the dynamic of the site and the grade differential and everything that impacts that site.
Can, can you say again the total number of stalls that are available? And that breakdown again, because it's different than how it's presented in the parking analysis.
Yeah, no, no problem. So there's 373 stalls on-site. That includes the equipment rental that we have, that includes the truck rental, and that also includes the cart corrals that are in there.
And so, thanks for walking us through this again. I'm not really sure, I just want to get the net that is available to cars and trucks. So 373, then we're taking away ten?
So then you take those, you take that away, so you take the equipment rental, the truck rental, and the cart corrals away, because those will typically be utilized 24/7-
Right.
-by those areas. So you will have 357 stalls to use.
Okay. And then, we talk about the seasonal.
Yes. When seasonal sales is in session in December, and in that specific time during spring, you will remove 20 stalls from that count, and that's 337.
So at the maximum use for seasonal and the rental, we would have then 337 parking spots available.
Correct.
And the original requirement was for 357. Okay. Thank you for walking us through that again.
Yeah, no problem.
Anybody else have questions about that addition and subtraction? Well-educated grown adults would have been able to figure that out.
No, it's okay. It's a little confusing. I totally get it.
It takes all of us. Thank you.
The only question I have is if you've incorporated where your tough sheds are currently sitting in there into the three, let's say 357, once we take away the ones.
So we didn't have a meeting with the store manager and kind of walked them through our plan moving forward. So they will add some sheds during the seasonal sales area, and it would be accommodated in that area during the springtime. And then additionally, we told them moving forward that they would need to accommodate smaller sheds on the front apron like we previously had. So the sheds did grow over time, which happens unfortunately, right? So it did, they did grow over time, but we did tell them we need to revert back to what we were doing previously. And that's kind of what our walk is tomorrow. Typically, after the hearing, I walk through with the store manager and I go through all of their conditions of approval with them. I go through their approved site plan with them and just kind of walk them through it, and then they actually get what's called an ORSP, and it's a color-coded diagram. And it basically, they hang it up in their office and like, this is your bible. This is what you are allowed to do on-site. This is the code that it references. This is the condition of approval, so that way if they have any questions, they can look at that. And then it also has my contact information on there too. So if anything comes up, they can call me and I can pull it up and explain it to them.
Perfect. That answers my question on the shed creep, if you will, that it's just kind of grown a little bit. I don't have a huge issue with it actually, and wonder if there's flexibility in where it is located, but, but all that to say, as long as you're aware of that, and the same thing with the cisterns on the side.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I just want to make sure that you did receive a copy of this inventory that was committed tonight.
Yes, I did just look at this briefly. I would need to double-check the cart corrals, so I believe there are additional cart corrals on here. I'm not 100% sure if they were approved with our original approval. So that's something that I would need to confirm with them. But yes, I do plan on bringing this to the store manager tomorrow as well and just kind of walking them through.
I think you're getting a clear idea of our concern, I think maybe the general public, that there's a lot of close parking, actually, that's being taken up with storage.
Right.
You know, we mentioned the sheds that are around the perimeter of the seasonal area. That actually impacts circulation tremendously. Also, over next to the existing garden center, not only is that, you know, a loss of close parking, it, it's blight, for lack of a different word. As you come in, you know, we-
Right.
We worked really hard with the original applicant to make this a good-looking Home Depot. You know, modifications were made, and so when it opened, you know, you kind of had this flow. And now we, in addition to the sheds, there's all sorts of stuff over there. I've seen, you know, plants, things for the garden center, just all sorts of stacks, and it doesn't look very good, does it? And so everybody worked really hard with the landscaping, and then because of whatever reason, we've got this, this creep into that area. And then also, you can take this map and work with your manager and see what else is occupying that's highlighted in pink, and you'll see how circulation and availability of parking has really been impacted.
Right, I agree. And something hopefully that will help as well is we didn't have outdoor storage approved previously on the rear of the building. So hopefully, a lot of the stuff that you're seeing in the parking lot is going to be relocated to the rear of the building, which will actually help out our employees a lot as well, because this will be like their staging area, and it gives them 72 hours from a delivery to get everything inside of the store. So I think that'll help as well, because it's going to be taking that storage and staging out of those parking stalls and putting it to the back of the building, which is actually something that we implement now for new stores, just because we recognize the problem as Home Depot, you know, it's scattering throughout the parking lot, and it seems like it's just increasing all the time. So that's why, moving forward, we started putting staging and storage in the rear of the store, so one, customers don't see it, and two, it's easier for the customer, or for the employees to kind of navigate it and get it inside the building as well.
Did you have a question?
I did. Just a couple of quick questions. I noticed you mentioned being able to rent out the trucks with the 25-foot beds. Are the parking spots able to accommodate that?
Yes. So with these parking stalls, so on, for the trucks, they're going to be striped so that they're pull-through stalls.
Okay.
They're just going to go right through to make it easier for the customer and the employee when parking them.
So would that remove six other stalls that currently exist?
No, it's accounted for in our parking under the truck rental. Yes.
Thank you. And then, just a clarification on, you mentioned the, being able to open up that back area. Would a car be able to get out if, say, a truck pulled in while they were in the store?
Yes. So are you talking, the back driveway access is what you're talking about? Yes. So if a truck pulled in and a car was getting out, yes, they would be able to turn. They won't be able, it'll be a right-in, right-out only, so they'll only be able to make a right, but yes, they will still be able to get out of that area. It is wide enough.
Thank you.
And then my last thing, sorry, I meant to bring this up earlier, just kind of about the equipment rental. The equipment rental is stored in the parking lot, but it is locked up every evening. I know that was a question too. It does get locked up so people can't access it. The only employees that are able to access the tool rental are the tool rental employees. So even if you go into Home Depot and you just go to the normal cash register, they won't have the key to unlock it or anything and hook it up. So if you're renting equipment from the tool rental center, you have to go in the tool rental center and talk to a TRC employee. But in the evening, those are locked up so that nobody can access them, take them, and they're on a trailer and everything.
I guess my question, if I may, had to do with trying to figure out that calculations of where it went from numbers like 361 up to 374 in the like. Correct me if I'm wrong, but my memory of the tough sheds is they used to be directly in front of the building on what was described on your map as B. And now they occupy a whole bunch of space that's reserved in the past for parking. Is that correct?
That is correct. So they have moved, they have migrated a little bit to the parking stall, so that's what we, by putting the front apron sales back on this site plan, the store manager is going to be moving the sheds back to that front apron, right in front of the building, instead of being in the parking lot. The only time you'll see it in the parking lot is if they order additional sheds during the seasonal sales time period.
And they'll be restricted to what's shown in the starred area for seasonal?
That's correct.
Okay.
And of course, where tough sheds are now is an area where some people would have preferred to park because of proximity, getting closer.
Correct.
Same thing for the cisterns. Where were those initially?
It doesn't look like on the 2004 site plan that they were included. It was probably something that they brought in for seasonal sales, and then if they weren't able to sell them, then they just relocated them to a different location, which is not what they should have done. But those would be relocated to either just during the seasonal time during those March, April, May months, or they would be relocated to the front apron of the store.
So what you've added in the beginning is you now have, where the tough sheds were in front of the property, additional things. Mowers, snow blowers, you name it. All kinds of equipment there for sale. So if you could help me out and figure out, how did you have that extra space available before, and it's now less, and you come out, come out with higher numbers? How did that happen?
So it was actually a smaller area before, so looking at the previously approved site plan, there wasn't as much front apron space utilized. So with the new site plan, we are requesting to utilize a little more space, more so in front of the garden center area, so that way we can make sure that the flower beds and the boats and everything are in that area. So that way, we have more space in front of the Home Depot store to accommodate those additional, the tough sheds and everything, relocating those back to the original locations.
I guess lastly, did you look for any other way to make another use of the present space to free up sparking? For example, the cisterns to be stacked, or to have the tough sheds fewer samples, because there's now more samples, I think, than you had in the past. Do you need to have all, you know, 14 or 17 tough sheds out there, or can you have the popular ones and then the others illustrated by drawings, diagrams, and photographs?
Yeah, so that, that is our plan, is to just have like our smaller ones and our best sellers on the front apron, and then if they want to add the additional ones during the seasonal sales period, then they can bring those in, and it will be just specified in that area. It won't go outside of that seasonal area, and once that timeframe is over, they will have to be removed. So they won't be able to stay there until they're sold, kind of thing. So yes, we will be downsizing and doing with just what, what is the most popular along the front apron, and then if the store manager is selling out of them really quickly during the spring season, then he'll add them to the seasonal sales area and make sure they're removed by the time that TUP has expired.
You, you might have already mentioned this, but do you know how many, how many parking spaces right now are actually available with all of the storage?
Based on the map that I received, and I haven't been able to go out there, I will be out there tomorrow, so I can definitely circle back. But I want to say with the storage, it was around, I believe he said.
I did a really quick calculation. It might actually is highlighted a little different. I think I just got one skipped. But I think it was about 72 occupied in the pink, not including the yellow, which are specialized ones. So it would say, it would still be an excess of 250, let's say, even if there was a couple more with the occupied ones currently, which are going to be reduced when you guys deal with the sheds and the cisterns. That was my calculation, real quick, before the meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry for an additional question.
No, it's okay.
When we talked earlier about the additional entrance and exit, is that that like side door that appears to be in part?
So there will be, so this is an interior remodel, so it's not going to be pushing the building out or anything. So there will be a door added for the TRC side, but the additional entrance, it's along Placerville Drive, and it's a little bit, I want to say it's the west, yes, it's the west entry on Placerville Drive.
So over-
To the west.
Just before the signal, there's a driveway there. They would, they blocked previously and had it for deliveries only. They're offering to open that up permanently.
So it's not a new entry for the store?
It's not a physical entry, it's a car entry.
Right.
Yes, that they're talking about.
But there will be a new entry for like the tool rental center that, yeah, there will be a door, and they can access that from the outside of the building and also from the inside of the building as well. I think that's everything I have.
That will just be entrance and exit? There won't be registers there at that new, the door that you're discussing?
Yes. So there will be registers there because with the TRC, the tool rental center, they can only rent from inside of there. They can't go to a normal Home Depot checkout and rent the equipment. They have to go through the tool rental center so that the registers in there will specifically be just for tool rental, whether that's the trucks, the equipment in the parking lots, or small handheld tools.
Okay.
I've got a-
Anything else?
I've got a question about the signs.
Sure. We can, we can talk about parking- We hadn't, we didn't talk about parking so much. Go ahead.
Are you, unless you're still working on parking?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I just had a question about the sign exhibit. So, um, it says, and, and this was also mentioned during the, the staff presentation, that the sign to be installed would be low, the location of it would be determined at the time of permitting.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason for that?
Um, just the specific location of it. So if you look at the sign package where it says the tool rental, um, above the door, that is the location of it. It will be above the tool rental door, just the specific, um, dimensions of like how high up and how low it could be to the door.
Okay.
Will vary. Yeah, but that's where it will be. It'll be on that tool rental side of the building, above that door.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other, uh, questions about the signage since we've kind of jumped over to that? Yeah, it looks, you know, you, uh, in keeping with what's there already, very little change really, except for the adding the tool rental.
I guess the only thing I'll touch on is the car entrance. You, did you say you'll put a sign up that says right out only? Because it's a double yellow there and I don't want people going left if we incorporate that.
Yeah, we can.
Perfect. Okay.
That's not a problem.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down and walking us through, uh, clarifying all of our questions. Um, and, uh, yeah, please have a seat.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll open it up to the public now for comments, uh, before we take it under consideration. And I want to thank you, Mr. Drogish. This, uh, uh, map was very useful. I think, you know, one picture is worth a thousand words. I think it's.
I know the place well. It is my second home. So, um, yeah, just watching it over the years, how more and more materials have just gobbling up, gobbling up parking spaces. And it gets very frustrating. You know, if it was pushed way out to the perimeter against the back walls because everyone's too lazy, they want to park as close as they can to the front door. So my just concern is, um, increasing parking. Because, you know, what, 15-plus years ago, it was given a certain number of required parking. And we know as our community grows, it's, the increase is going to be there. And if they keep, lack a better term, gobbling up parking, um, I think you really should hold tight to what the city requires now. Because basically, in a nutshell, if they're not adding a roof to it, you can't do, you know, a major site plan review change, I'm guessing. And the, the pink there was materials. And you could basically consider that entire North Garden Parking Center off limits because it is overflow truck deliveries, forklifts. There is seldom more than three parking spots there. So that entire section, you can strip out of the numbers because it's functionally not usable. The seasonal section, like last year, was blocked off. So it was that entire 20, the 13 where the sheds are, the six where the sheds are, they ran a fence all the way from the water tanks. And so that was 39 parking spaces they blocked off during seasonal, given that the sheds were there. So they just claimed 20. But it's interesting, you have to think, so if they're going to move the sheds to the front apron, what gets displaced? What do they have there now? A bunch of the individual carts, big lawn mowers, barbecues, um, a couple of fancy Arbor displays. Where do they get displaced? If, same thing with the tool rental, if it's going to be on the, the southeast corner and they're going to put a corral up where the big lumber carts are, where do they get displaced? Are they going out into the parking lot with more cart returns? My cart return count is perfect. So you have to think about these things. They do move things around a lot. Like rebar was right where they want their tool rental corral, and now it's back around the building. They just seem to completely move things around all the time. I would like you to continue it because the conditions seem to be, need to be finessed. And the other thing was there was kind of newish information added into the staff report because there was some boilerplate that had to get pulled.
What, what was that?
There was, anyway, there was more information besides the applicant. I think the other reason to justify a continuance, no site visit yet. How is that possible? That you're the applicant's messenger and you haven't visited the site? I find it crazy. But, and then for the granting of variance, usually requires special conditions that you can't control, slope, irregular lot. Something is going against your property that you should get a variance for to meet code. And I don't see, given that big flat area, how you can justify a variance very well. You know, what are they going to say? There's too many trees in the parking lot? We need to cut them down to make more parking? I don't know. But I'd be very, I would analyze the findings of a variance for this parcel. But I have a whole bunch more, but if there was any questions on what the, the colors meant was the pink is blocked with basically building materials and cart returns, trailers, water tanks, all that. And the yellow were just the, the special use, you know, the, the extra wide stalls for trailers, the handicap. The, the six spots for online delivery, where people order, they pull up, they ring the business, and then they run the material out. So that was another special use. Don't know if there was any questions on it. Good go.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. And, uh, again, thank you for this detailed drawing. I think it's, uh, reflects what a lot of us have experienced, like just what we've heard, uh, so far, uh, from the other commissioners. So I'll close the public comment, uh, portion and take a sip of water. And bring it back to the commission for consideration. Um, I'll just start out on my thoughts. To me, uh, there is adequate, there are adequate spaces there. The problem is this in creeping, this encroachment into the available parking. Um, I, I feel that if the store can keep free and clear the number of spaces that were identified with the original application, uh, that's fair and, and sufficient. I have not seen anyone have to park out on Placerville Drive and walk into Home Depot. I certainly haven't, uh, had that, um, happen. So I think that the spaces are there. They may not be close to the front door like I would like, but I can get in there and I can get out. I think the circulation is okay, except for when there's all this other stuff. And I, you know, the, um, the applicant has heard us and, uh, we're, we're speaking for the whole community really. Uh, it's not just our personal experience. So, um, I, I, that's, rather than bringing them up to a newer standard of, and trying to find, uh, more spaces, um, I, I think we have sufficient if we can adhere to the conditions. I also would like us to consider, um, including in our conditions of approval, specifically saying something about this, uh, opening up the second entrance and exit. And I was looking at the, uh, language we have under number nine, the parking management. One of the stipulations is that the applicant shall submit an annual parking utilization report to the city. If we decide we want to have this entrance, uh, second entrance or exit opened, uh, I would like to have that included, uh, have the, um, have Home Depot come back and report, you know, have there been any problems? Have there been any complaints? And, uh, take that opportunity to evaluate it. Because as I mentioned before, I've used it. It was okay when I went down there. It is, it is just kind of a little narrow and, and steep. Um, and there were no trucks down there, so it wasn't a conflict. But I, I can see that, um, you know, that maybe if there were trucks there, that this might get a little complicated and might not help our, um, circulation after all. So, um, I think those are my thoughts right now. I'll turn it over to, uh, Amy. Go ahead.
I agree with you. Um, so I agree that there is sufficient parking there overall. They have been told to address the creep of the, um, inventory that's in the parking lot, and we've been told that they are going to do that. Um, I think that the locations of the proposed truck rental and equipment rental are in appropriate spaces. They don't, they aren't right up in the front. They aren't taking that parking that is currently occupied by cisterns, but will in theory be open going forward. So I think that that is appropriate. I also think that the March 1st review annually makes it so that we can check back in. Um, my request with that second, that other entrance for the parking lot, um, with the cars coming in, is to not highly advertise it. So I don't want people slamming on their brakes on Placerville Drive to turn in there thinking it's the main entrance versus the signal, which I think is a lot safer. Um, so my only request there would be that it's not like entrance right there on that one, but more so just has a right turn only on exit sign, um, for safety, that people aren't trying to turn left there, um, because there's not a lot of space and there's a double yellow line. So I don't want it to say a big entrance sign, um, on that one, but I'm happy that it will be open because I think with the side parking opening up, that will be a fine entrance for people to come in and out.
That's a great, you know, at the big five, um, it's posted that, uh, you're not to turn left off of Placerville Drive. Uh, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, I've done it, people do it, but, you know, it, it slows down.
It's just a basic sign.
And so, uh, right turn only, uh, into and right turn only exit, I think.
Uh, yeah, that'd probably be fine. I doubt people are turning too much left there because there's that left turn lane. It's kind of a really hard left turn to make, harder than big five, um, which is more open. So I'm not as concerned with people turning left into that. I'm more concerned with people going right when they exit it. Does that make sense? Um, I also think that, like I said, even with everything in consideration, I'm, I'm definitely not in favor of requiring more parking for them. I don't think the space allocates for it and I don't think it's necessary. I've never had a problem. Um, so I think that the number of required stalls, getting rid of the inventory that's currently being stored, which they have plans to address, um, are all fine. And I do want them to have inventory at the store, so I don't want people to be frustrated that they don't have stuff. So I'm glad that they keep inventory on site, but I'm also glad that they're going to have somewhere else to put it. I think people come and go fairly quickly. It's not like a movie theater where you're saying for hours. Um, so I don't think there's any issue with turnover. Um, so I'm in favor of it all. I have no problem with the conditions of approval minus the one about removing the non-operational hours under number 11. And I think everything else looks fine.
All right. Go ahead.
One thing I hadn't heard addressed is when you have rentals for trucks, which they have had in the past, and presumably would be the kind of equipment that would be included, what happens when someone comes in to pick up the rental truck? You leave your vehicle there for one day, two days, whatever it is. So that means a reduction in parking space for those kind of vehicles. I didn't hear that addressed.
There's only six trucks though, so it's not like there's 40 and we're having 40 individual cars sitting there. That would be my assumption, is that it's only six. It's a minimal amount.
Any other comments? All right. I think that's everything. I had thought about emphasizing, um, maybe under number 10, uh, on our conditions of approval. Home Depot shall not utilize the identified parking spaces for storage of any materials, equipment, or inventory unless explicitly approved by the city. You know, we, it's implied, but I was wondering if the commission would want to put, to emphasize, uh, outdoor storage will be limited to the areas depicted on the attached site plan. I, you know, it's, it's redundant, uh, it's incorporated by reference, but then again too, I, I think sometimes, especially if there's a change of, um, operation managers. And so i- if we spell it out as deliberately and clearly as possible, uh, just to emphasize that we, um, we're working in good faith with Home Depot. Home Depot has given us, um, their site plan and, um, and, you know, I, I think we all agree that if we adhere to the terms, the site plan, you know, is sufficient. So what do you think about adding some emphasis to number 10? Or do you think it's, it's fine? You know, it is fine the way it's written. What I was thinking, do you think we need to emphasize it?
I just think you're doubling down if you add stuff. I don't think it's totally necessary. I totally understand because I do want it to be clear. But I think with number nine saying that they're going to do the parking utilization by March 1st, um, to verify compliance with the variance and then additionally, so I think 10 is actually kind of doubling down already.
Already, okay.
On what we're requiring of them.
I think I was just.
The representative has heard us.
I'm trying to, you know.
I get it, yeah.
You're being heard, but.
Like I said, the creep happens and if at March 1st, we get the, the thing and we're all s- sitting there seeing a ton more sheds or cisterns or things, then I think that we can move forward with that. Um, but I think that it's clear in, in the conditions, at least for me.
And, uh, so where are we on the opening of the entrance, second entrance and exit? Do we have general agreement on adding that? And, um, then as far as the directional signage, um, right turn only for entering?
I think, I only think it's required for exiting.
For exit.
Yeah, that would be my inclination. I actually at first was like, do we really even want that? Do I want people slamming on their brakes on Placerville Drive early to get in there? But I think if it's not highly advertised, but it is open, so if people pull in, they're not hitting a barrier, then I think that it can just kind of exist, um, and be fine. And then the only thing I would like to see is a right turn only exit sign there so that people don't cut across to go left.
Return only.
Right, right turn only exit.
Right turn only for exit. And, um, and what about including that in the annual evaluation for conflicts, problems?
Absolutely. I think so. How would it be measured? Like car accidents? Like, I'm not sure. That was thinking.
Complaints?
Complaints?
Yeah, I think it would be, it would be complaints to the city, right? And then.
It could be to the city or to the business. So there's really no way to regulate that.
But I guess it also, um, opens up the opportunity for when we're having our annual review, that if there are concerns by the public, they can also come and express them directly to us.
Outside of the parking analysis? Okay. We could just collect comments and generally talk about circulation?
Well, I think that it needs to be part, I think that it needs to be addressed in their parking analysis. I think that anything that, any comments or concerns should be disclosed as part of their, their parking, um, documentation to the city.
Okay.
Would we normally review those reports every year or is it just something that they have to submit and then you have it on file?
It, it's just a submittal. So currently as the condition's written, it just says submit to the city for review. So if the commission would like to modify that to have it come back before this board, uh, we can certainly make those changes.
Okay, I thought it would come back to us. So do we do, do we do that with other? I guess, how, do we do, have we done that with other?
Uh, no.
No, I don't think, I don't, I don't see the necessity of it. I think it's a hard thing to manage for, to put into the conditions and have them required to do it. I think we'll know if we're having lots of issues there and, um, they're not going to want a bunch of problems there either. So if things are getting backed up there, then I think it will resolve itself. Um, I think it's probably safe enough to move forward with, um, with the evaluations that are in place. And then, like I said, I don't, I don't foresee it being a huge problem.
So, uh, I want to make sure I understand, um, you feel that a staff level review is sufficient?
Yeah.
And Catherine, you feel, how do you feel about that?
I, I think that should be sufficient.
Just to clarify as well.
Go ahead.
Is this only opening up four parking spots in the back? Or like, what, what are these other squares that are near the loading area?
The pink ones?
I don't see any other parking.
Michael's stating that something is occupied by storage right now.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, that's just.
Do they add more stalls?
That would not be, that would not be parking.
No, it would open, it would really just give people access to this side parking lot more easily.
Oh, I see.
See, this is the, this is the exit and entry I'm talking about for the cars that would have the right turn only sign right here.
Yeah.
Really, all that would do is alleviate a little congestion in here, let people pop into here and park in these side ones rather than limiting it to this entry and exit at the signal.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And for the commission's comfort, if there are issues, there is a condition of approval saying that they cannot store outside of areas.
Right.
That are, aren't approved. So we can go down the code compliance route as well.
Do we need to add a condition saying there should be a right turn only sign on that one? Yes. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have hammered out another, one other condition?
I, I haven't, I've got another revision to one of the conditions. Just adding detail because it's, because we have everything else explicitly described except for the external storage outside of the Tool Rental Center. It's just, for some reason, the application was completely blank about that, was completely silent about that. So Condition 3, it says the use hereby permitted is for the operation of an internal tool rental center. And I'd like to add with adjacent outside storage, equipment rental display and 10 parking stalls. So right now, every, right now, we're only acknowledging the equipment rental displays in the parking area and not outside of the Tool Rental Center.
I believe that the rental displays are in the front, not in front of the Tool Rental Center. So where they're having, say where like all the snow blowers and barbecues and everything is, from what I understood?
Yeah, so on the site plan, it's just to the left of the like pickup area. So it's right, to me, it looks like it's at the, the entry, where I had thought maybe the entry to the Tool Rental Center was going to be, but it's, it's contiguous with all the other sales displays that are outside.
Well, actually, it's, you have that big overhang in entrance and so it is on the apron.
That's the word I was looking for.
Just like the barbecues and other things.
Right. But it's not, but, so in the application, they describe the, the outside displays in the apron and there is an explicitly state that the equipment rental is not part of that display. And, but it's shown here on the site plan in this other little separate part on the apron. So I just, it's a small detail, but I just think it's.
Could it be equipment rental display on apron and 10 parking stalls? Okay, cool. On front apron?
Yeah.
And in 10 parking stalls?
That's perfect. Thank you.
So TRC on front apron. Do you want to just say as depicted on the site plan in Attachment A, so we're clear? I mean, this is what they're, this is what they're proposing, so.
Right, it's just for some reason, everything else is like explicitly stated and that's the only thing that's not.
So that people can, you know, see what, because this is your concern. That it stays, that it's there and it stays there and doesn't creep out.
Or just that it's some, that we are acknowledging it consistent with every other element that's being approved here.
Okay. All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll do it. I'll do it. Are you going to do it? No? Okay.
I didn't take notes on all the.
That's fine. I think I got, I think, I didn't have too many additions though, so, okay. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit 25-03, variance 25-01, and master sign plan amendment 25-01, subject to the attached conditions of approval, and direct staff to prepare a notice of exemption for the applicant to file with the Eldorado County Clerk Recorder's Office. The conditions of approval will be updated to state. Number 3, after equipment rental display, it should say, and on front apron as notated in Attachment A, and in 10 parking stalls. Update Number 11 to eliminate the words "and remove during non-operational hours" and add a 12th condition that right turn only signs shall be installed on the exit of the west entryway.
Do I have a second? Okay, I'll second. I am going to offer a friendly amendment. Where do we talk about opening up that entrance? Did I miss that?
It's in the variance in the staff report on page 6. It talks about adequate public parking is provided with improvements to traffic flow such as limiting outdoor storage and adding an entrance exit.
I guess I wasn't comfortable with that. I thought that such as limiting outdoor storage and adding an entrance exit, and we're being very specific about other requirements. So I thought that it would be a good idea to say that they would actually be opening that entrance. But I can see, actually, under Number 11, we would, could just add F, that at the second entrance, the signage would be directional for right turn only as you suggested. So you feel that it's clear that the second entrance is going to be open as part of this project?
I agree that we should add it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just think, I just think that, you know, some, sometimes as these conditions and these, you know, documents get passed along, as you were saying earlier, you know, it's, it can be hard to piece together what we're doing now if it's not just, you know, clearly stated.
What if, so I added a 12th condition about right turn only signs. What if we added before the right turn only signs, western entryway will be permanently opened with, without time limitations and right turn only signs will be added at the exit on the west entryway?
I don't want to put too much detail. Let's just say second entrance will be open. You think, you don't want any time restrictions as the applicant?
I thought that that was the.
They were going to perhaps discuss it with the store manager, whether they should restrict when it was open and closed. So you think that that's not necessary or beneficial?
Not to have like a documented one per se. I think if there's an obstruction, just like anywhere, you can throw a cone up or something to let people know that it's not currently available. But I think having a formal barrier opening and closing and things like that is probably not necessary because she said that the trucks come in, they do their turn and they're good. So I don't think we're accounting for, say, a three hour period of time where it's blocked every day, so.
Right. I didn't like that either, so.
Yeah, so I don't think it's.
I think I'd rather just keep it general and say the second entrance will be opened and it will be, the signage will be, as we discussed, the right turn only for exiting.
Okay, great. So I will.
Did we, did we get under 11 be removing? Okay, thanks.
So I will amend my motion to amend Number 12 to say the second entryway will be opened without restriction?
Just opened.
Okay, just opened and right turn only signs at the exit will be placed in that western entry, exit of the entryway.
Finally amended. So you've amended your motion. I second your amended motion. Further discussion? Anything we missed?
Just thinking of how you said, just to say, open the second driveway, should we say to customers? Because technically it's already open for deliveries.
I don't think so. I mean, I don't see it.
Yeah, I think, again, I just want to keep it really general. Any other comments?
Because there's also employees. There's, you know, you get a little specific and then it gets a little restrictive.
All right. Great work. Let's see, just make sure we've gotten everything. All right. Ms. Watkins, how will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Stratton?
Aye.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lefter?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye. 5-0. Congratulations. This is subject to a 10-day appeal period. I again want to thank you for coming down, Ms. Permenter, to work with us and wish you a lot of success and looking forward to the improvements at the Home Depot site. Okay, let's take a five-minute break and. Let's, so let's close the meeting and we'll reconvene at 7:55. It's 7:52 and I'm going to call our meeting back to order. Again, thank you, thank you everyone for your hard work on the previous item. And we'll move on to 9.2, Master Sign Plan Amendment 2503 for sociology at 564 Main Street. I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Kendrick, for the staff report.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I do want to apologize for the errors in the staff report. You were provided with a revised Red Line staff report and the agenda was revised to reflect Item 9.2. We do have updated on the city's website when we became aware of that. And so if you've got any questions about that, I'm happy to answer those after the presentation. But I am presenting Master Sign Plan Amendment, MSP 2503, for the sociology coffee bar located at 564 Main Street. The applicant is Kyle Stillman on behalf of the property owner Brandon Guter, and they are requesting approval of Master Sign Plan Amendment for this third acre parcel in the central business district. The site is fully developed with a building constructed circa 1938, historically used as restaurants like Tortilla Flats, Hangtown Cantina, and Rocker Oyster Vellers. Today, it operates as sociology bar, offering specialty coffee, roasting, and light food service in our historic downtown along Main Street. This request builds on a previous Master Sign Plan Amendment, SPR 84-01-R, which the commission approved in January of 2025 for a total of 169 square feet of signage. The current proposal incorporates multiple signs to enhance the visibility and branding for this use. It does include painted wall signs and it would be considered signs. I know it, there's been discussion about murals, but because it's advertising, it's got the coffee, which is indicating what's being sold there, is advertising, so staff considers it to be signage as well as their tagline. On the north elevation, they are proposing a 38-foot by 3 1/2-foot identification sign totaling 133 square feet using painted wood with 72 square feet of vinyl letters. It's illuminated by external gooseneck lights with warm LEDs at 3,000 K or less. On the west elevation, a coffee sign is 11 feet by 4 feet and a where the vibe never dies sign is 14 by 5 feet, both painted with no illumination. On the east elevation, a coffee sign is at 12 feet by 3 feet and painted with no illumination. If approved as proposed, the project would bring the total signage to 600, 269 square feet. The paintings on the side, again, are considered signage. It's something that the planning commission can consider, raising questions about the classification as art versus identification signage. Regarding historic resources, as detailed in the staff report, this property is within 300 feet of several listed historic sites from our city's inventory, including Pearson Soto Works at 549 Main Street. It's approximately 150 feet away. The former Studebaker Shop at 543 Main Street, about 210 feet away, and the Fountain and Tall Man Museum at 524 Main Street, and the Stable Building at 582 Main. Given the suspension of the standalone historic advisory committee in 2015, the commission serves in that capacity to review these considerations. As I mentioned, it is a third of an acre and it's surrounded by parking lots to the north and west. That's not right. To the east and west. The Alta California Regional Center across Main Street and single-family residence to the south and east. viewing the, either viewing the murals as compliant art or as signage, approve with modifications such as reducing the size of the signs, or deny if finding inconsistencies with the historic guidelines or regulations providing specific reasons in the motion. At this time, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. And I do have one question under recommended Commission action. It's not specified, but I just want to go on the record that we do have the option to continue this item?
That is correct.
Okay. That's the only question I have about the staff report. But I see Amy Lever has her microphone.
Just if you could state again, did you say that their allowable square footage is 200?
The max aggregate is 200.
Okay. That's by ordinance.
Right, yes, yes, okay. I just heard that number and I wanted to make sure that I heard it right. Okay, great. And thank you for the updates. I caught those same things that you did, and then on page two, that the related imagery is on the north and west-facing walls.
I'm really struggling with my.
It's okay. It took me a while, too. But you caught, the other questions I had were related to the corrections that you made. Clarifying on page three, your table was correct, just the narrative was a little bit mixed up, and then eliminated the gas station reference and the pole sign reference. So thank you for fixing those.
Anyone else have a question about the staff report?
I guess, to be clear, there's nothing in here about a design or a mural, is there?
Originally, the applicant, when they submitted their application, they called them murals. Based on staff's evaluation, we don't consider them murals, but that is what the applicant had identified them as.
So what's it referring to? In these diagrams, what is shown that would be described as a mural?
The two coffee, painted coffee, and then where the vibe.
The coffee and the "Where the Vibe Never Dies," those are on the west side?
Like the front where it says Sociology, that would be called artwork?
No, that's their identification sign. It's the signs on the sides of the building that they were identifying as murals.
And do they consider this coffee, is that a mural?
That's what they originally submitted. We considered it signage.
Sign, okay, okay.
And were we being asked to approve pink on that side?
That is their proposal. I think that.
This is an historic district.
So the color is part of their application?
That is part of their application. I did talk with the applicant. I don't know where he is, but I think he's definitely open to some other color choices. I told him that I had some concerns with the pink.
We don't usually talk about, we don't have a color palette, and you know, that's a good point.
It doesn't look like the color palette business that I'm familiar with.
We don't have one in our design guidelines. We've talked about this before.
And since we've talked about string lights being garish, pink might come under that rubric.
Okay, interesting. Anyone else have a question? Okay, I think Catherine Ashley was first, so then we'll go with Catherine and then Alyssa.
I don't have any other questions.
Oh, I thought you did, okay.
Yeah, same. I was just going to respond about the pink.
Me, too.
Just thinking that Sweetie Pies is very close by, which is a big building, kind of a staple to the community, so it almost blends with that.
That was exactly what I was going to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Blends with Sweetie Pies?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess the distinction.
Oh, now, wait a minute. Before we get into that, I want to respect procedure. The applicant is not here to answer our questions, but there is a member of the public, so I would like to invite you up to the podium if you have any comments about this Master Sign Plan Amendment for Sociology.
All right, hot pink. Yeah, I was going to note, too, Sweetie Pies is in a pink hue, but it is very dark and it has some purple hues to it, so it's not as garish. And though the city doesn't have requirements or total controls of colors, it is asking for earth tones and muted, soft, nothing bold, nothing garish. So, I mean, if the applicant isn't here to defend his things, aside from like hospital emergency or something, you know, choose a hue that is more fitting for our historic district, you know, I could see giving Tortilla Flats for so long, maybe a nice Mission, you know, rosé or some salmon, just it needs to be toned down because the Planning Commission did require the tire store across from Rayleigh's that wanted their entire front fire engine red. And the Planning Commission said, hey, you know, tone it down and reduce the coverage of that, and they went along with it. So I love the staff report referencing the, given a project within 300 feet of a historic resource. It's very important because that triggers historic district review, which is where you can, you, as the Planning Commissioner, also the historic district review, you get to say, you're supposed to make the project compatible with a historic district, which is kind of a generic saying, but it's up to you to say, yes, this fits, or no, this is a little too over the top. So you do have that authority. Murals are exempt under 10-4-17-C-11, and it specifically states, "Murals provided that no mural or portion thereof identifies a business, entity, occupancy, or premises." And it was always explained by Andrew and Pierre that a mural depicting what's, it's not a mural if it's depicting what's going on inside the building. So if it was a lawyer's office, and then there was law books all over the outside of the building, that would not be a mural because it's mentally telling you what's going on in the building, and it's a way to get around the signed square footage requirement. So I didn't realize that, I thought there was actually coffee cups painted somewhere that I couldn't see, but if the actual two words of coffee, those are not murals. Those have to be counted towards square footage of signage, and you can give a variance to that if you want, but, and I also think the tagline on this wall, on the west wall, I think that's a branding.
The "Where the Vibe Never Dies."
Vibes, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yep, okay, I understand.
I think that's a branding statement, so that's a sign, that's not, that's not a mural.
Okay, I understand your point. Not art, it's branding.
Yeah. I would like to see a condition added, they have a very rare thing going on here. Right embedded in the front of this private building is the Lincoln Highway Historical Marker that years ago was dug up in the street, and somehow it got out of the street and plugged right into the front of a private building. That marker belongs to the city of Placerville. So I would like a condition that just states, any future remodeling that necessitates its removal, that the owner coordinate with the city manager, the city, and the museums to safely remove it and preserve it and find it a good home. We don't need some, you know, contractor coming along and just ripping it out.
Is it missing?
Throwing it in a dumpster.
Is it missing?
No, it's there.
Okay, it's there, okay.
I'm just looking to the future to add a condition that that is actually public property. It's very special. There's one over at the county museum.
It's on the building or like on the sidewalk?
So it looks like from the maps, it's actually two lots, which was another question of mine.
There are two, yes, they own two lots, uh-huh.
And I'll get back to that, but it's kind of like right in the middle, and, you know, about this high off the ground. It's a total secret. Vibes is not a mural. Coffee's not a mural. The pink is, to me, horrific, but it's just paint, so I really don't tend to want to control pink, I mean, paint. So getting back to, if there's two parcels, how do you decide the square footage for the business? I mean, is the tenant, the applicant, renting both properties so then he gets to divide up?
It's lineal footage of the building.
Of the Main Street frontage.
Right, so corner to corner of the building. That's their frontage.
If he's only renting half, if he's only renting one lot, how would you decide? If he was only renting the east lot?
We would still base it on the building frontage.
Would he be allowed to have a sign on the west wall, which is a different lot?
It's based on the frontage, the lineal footage of the frontage, so on Main Street there, and that's been measured at 64 lineal feet.
Yeah, but do you see what I'm saying? It's not that.
Yeah, I know, and I got wrapped around the same thing, and so that, what's on the sides, the east and the west, that's just part of their total allowable based on the 64 lineal feet of frontage on Main Street. I'm sorry to be so deliberate, but I had the same problem you did.
It's a technicality, yeah, because what if?
It's 64 lineal feet, and that's what everything else hinges on, and so.
And is this application coming from the property owner or the business owner?
Well, actually, right now, I'd just like to take your comments, and when we come back, I intend to fully discuss it, and hopefully through that, your questions will be answered.
It kind of affects my path, because if it's an owner application, because we know this, a lot of these things will become.
This is the business owner application?
And if it's a business owner applying, how can he transfer the rights he's getting tonight or whatever to the property owner?
I don't understand the question. As far as the ordinance is, the applicant is, you know, they have their agreement with the actual property owner, and as far as our concern, is with the ordinance and the limitations described in our sign ordinance. So, and that is, there's two square feet of signage allowed for 50 lineal feet, and then when you go beyond 50, it drops to .67, and so then, and then the maximum you can have, regardless of how much frontage you have on the street, is 200. So you do, you're good at math, that'd be like 200. So if you had 120 lineal feet of your building on the road, you still would be restricted to 200 square feet by ordinance, except, you know, I guess then they could apply for a master's sign plan, and we could consider special circumstances. But these people only have 64.
Sure, but I'm getting back to a lower square where you decide who's applying, who's getting the rights to this signage if the property owner rented the west side.
The terms of the master's sign plan, right. The original one is, that's under, yeah, the building owner. However, this applicant is applying to us for a modification of that. And Ms. Kendrick, maybe you can clarify, we don't know what their relationship is, but business owners come to us all the time with their applications, and it's our assumption that they've cleared it with their building owner and there's no problem on their end.
That's correct, and as part of our application process, we do require the property owner's authorization if the property owner is not the one applying for the application. As noted on the first page of the staff report, the property owner is Brandon Gunther, and the applicant is Kyle Stillman, which is associated with Sociology.
So that's been taken care of administratively. Staff has, they've supplied that assurance to the city that they have the agreement of the property owner. That's their thing to work out, not ours.
Yes, and I can tell you based on experience that that is something that I am very strict about, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that alleviates any questions I had on the two parcels getting the rights to signage on all sides of the building.
You know, the second parcel is the parking, and it doesn't have a building on it.
Is that how the map shows? Because just looking at this, that doesn't tell me a whole lot.
Even if there was a second person occupying the building, they have to split up the signage anyway, right? So say they only rented half of it. There's still, we've had that before, where there's two people in one property, and they have the total amount, and they have like Smog Ace and Nerdy Daves. Okay, so they had a.
They hammer it out.
Mr. Drobish. So, for example, Smog Ace and Nerdy Daves, they had an allowable amount, they had to parse out the two. So if there were two people in there theoretically, they would still have the same amount allotted to them. They just have to figure out who gets how much.
So if they do rent out, yeah, so if they rent out this, like, half of what says Sociology, they'd have to come to us for a modification of their master sign package.
So that, yeah, it's multiple tenants in a, okay, that's already addressed, so that's all fine, and I just, the Lincoln Highway monument, protect it, and tone down the pink, and definitely the, those two.
Thank you.
Western murals are not murals.
All right, we appreciate your comments, and we'll work through this. So I'll bring it back to the Commission, since we have no other public comment, and let me start out by saying, it's my desire to continue this. That's why I asked the question. We went through this just in January, and there's an existing master sign plan, and it's 169 square feet, and at that time, we went through all sorts of concerns about, you know, visibility, attracting, you know, and so we had that discussion, and I'm very confident that we made the right decision to limit it. In fact, yeah, 169, when you think of the 200-square-foot maximum allowed, you know, you're getting close to that, but I think it's generous, and there is, in my mind, no reason to jump up to 269 square feet as they're proposing. I'm just going to walk you through, since I've got my microphone on. I do know, you know, it's right across the street. There is an existing, the second one listed on page two, coffee sign, that is 44 square feet. So that's what they have up right now. Everything else is proposed, and therefore, I think it's all flexible, but, you know, they've gone to the expense of painting that. It's got the checkerboard logo, that's their branding. So as far as I'm concerned, that's what they're, at this time, pinned to. And I'd like to continue it with the message to the applicant that unless they come to us with some finding to justify jumping up to 269 square feet, something that, you know, that bolsters the change, a massive change to the master sign package, I want them to stick to what was, what agreed upon at the, what was it, beginning of 2025. And that is, if you kind of follow with me there on page two, if you would, the identification sign. So this is the big one on the north elevation. At that time, we said 112 square feet for that. Over on the west, where they've painted the coffee sign, that was to be only 12 square feet. So we got a little conflict, but this is where I think they can work around, you know, their limitations. Going down to the next one, where the vibe never dies, I agree with Mr. Drobish, that is advertising. That's.
And at that time, we went through all sorts of concerns about, you know, visibility, attracting, you know, and, and so we had that discussion. And I'm very confident that, um, we made the right decision to limit it. In fact, yeah, a hundred and sixty-nine, when you think of the two hundred square foot, um, maximum allowed, you know, you're getting close to that, but I, I think it's generous. And there is, in my mind, no reason to jump up to two hundred and sixty-nine square feet as they're proposing. Um, it's, I'm just going to walk you through since I've got my microphone on. I do know, you know, it's right across the street. Uh, there is an existing, the, the second one listed on page two, uh, coffee sign, uh, that is forty-four square feet. So that's, that's what they have up right now. Everything else is, uh, proposed and therefore, I, I, I think it's all flexible, but, you know, they've gone to the expense of, of painting that. It's got the checkerboard logo, that's their branding. So as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's what they're, uh, at this time pinned to. And, uh, I'd like to continue it with, uh, the message to the applicant, uh, that unless they come to us with some, um, finding, uh, to justify jumping up to two hundred and sixty-nine square feet, something that, you know, that bolsters, uh, the change, a massive change to the master's sign package, um, I want them to stick to, uh, what was, what agreed upon at the, um, what was it, beginning of twenty twenty-five. And that is, if you kind of follow with me there on page two, if you would, uh, the identification sign. So this is the big one on the north elevation. At that time, uh, we said a hundred and twelve square feet for that. Uh, over on the west where they've point, painted the coffee sign, uh, that was to be only twelve square fe- feet. So we got a little conflict, uh, but this is where I think they can work around, um, you know, their limitations. Going down to, uh, the next one where the vibe never dies, uh, I agree with Mr. Drobish, that is advertising. That's, that's inside, I, I have been there. So this is, that's part of their logo. And it's fifty-six square feet. So this is, you know, something that I think they could, um, just drop, i- if they want to have larger signage on the, uh, than the east wall and the front. But we did not allow a, a second sign on that, uh, west wall. We limited it to twelve square feet, uh, where they now have the coffee sign, that's forty-four. And then finally, the coffee sign on the east, um, back earlier this year, we, uh, said that could be forty-five square feet. We were just doing rough math. They're proposing thirty-six square feet, which is a little bit smaller than what we discussed and, and outlined, um, in the master sign plan at that time. So I think you can see there's a little room for, um, redesign, um, and other selections. Even, it, it, I don't know how expensive it is or, you know, what their budget is for that, um, existing sign, maybe paint that over and, and reduce it if they feel like they need signage on the other, um, sides of the building. And, you know, and before I turn it over to the rest of you, this pink on the wall, yeah, I, I just thought that was to highlight. I didn't see that in the sign, uh, package that that was part of, um, their intent to paint that one wall pink. I agree, you know, it, we mentioned it, we, we don't have a palette, but we do have the standard of kind of, you know, blending into that historic district. So I, you know, I'm very sensitive to that color choice and I'd like to see something that's, um, a little more in keeping with the area. So those are my thoughts and who's got their finger on a mic? Oh, Kirk Smith's got his finger on the button.
Oh, I just got to follow up, uh, for Kenny on what you said. I do support the idea of continuing it for the reasons you described. I do think that some discussion would be helpful to save time in the future by letting us fully develop some of our concerns. One of them is about the, the palette, the pink. And I think here's a distinction that I would draw. Sweetie Pies is a Victorian structure. There are three Victorian structures in a row. And two of the three, consistent with the history of, of Victorian structures, have multiple colors for trim. When we had the tour of Bedford Avenue, there was one Victorian home of that same period that was to the, uh, north of, uh, the Shakespeare Club. And one of the interesting things to me was inside, they had large photographs of how that place had been painted about a half a dozen times. It was each time done differently. But what was consistent is that the gingerbread and all the other things were painted differently. So that's what distinguishes that property across the street, Sweetie Pies, from this place that's nineteen thirty-eight.
Right, it's, it's not a Victorian style at all.
Exactly.
It doesn't even reflect that.
Right.
It's, you know, it's a much Victorian style. Also with the brick arches, yeah.
It doesn't, it isn't necessary to bring attention to the place, uh, would be my, my concern. The interesting topic about, uh, the Lincoln Highway marker, I, I think that the challenge of that is that what's before us is signage.
Do you know who put that up? I, is that the city? Did the city install that?
I have no idea. I can tell you that Marilyn Ferguson, a long time historian, told me decades ago that the city, when Highway Fifty came through, buried a whole bunch of them across the street. They were casually discarded. There are not many of them left. There's one down at the museum and it was embedded. So I can't see it being removed. But what you can do, if we choose to do it, is recognize that it is signage, because after all, that is what it is, it's a marker.
It's not, it's not sign, you know, I, uh, let's use a different term because I, I, I see where you're going. Signage is their branding and, but, yeah, how, how do we, um, and I'm just going to ask staff to, you know, research that, see what, who put it there and how can we protect it? I think that's important.
However we describe it, it, it's presented this, to us in the context of a master's sign plan. So that's why I, I latched on to the word.
And the problem is, you know, finding the nexus there, you know, because, um, that's, what's before us is this master's sign plan and we're trying to tag this other thing on. And if that was a mitigation measure for something else or, you know, it, and it's not advertising, you know, this, um, this business. And so, yeah, I, I'm, I'm intrigued. I, I think this is something that I'd like to explore, but I don't know how we can do it in this context.
Yeah, this is a business that has been successful elsewhere and this imagery of, uh, you know, good vibes and all the rest. But, uh, they're in a historic district, they're right across the street from, uh, you know, uh, a, a number of places, like the Studebaker Warehouse. And there is some plaques for Studebaker that commemorates that precinct. So I would think that a new business coming into this area would, while they want to carry on their, their, their business plan, their, their, their mode of operation, could still pay homage to the history of this community and that would be one way to do it. Just as across the street, you have some artifacts, uh, in bronze for Studebaker. But that's just.
Yeah.
One of the things to consider at some point.
And you know, that, um, that bronze that, that you just mentioned about the Studebaker shop, um, I, I wasn't on the planning commission when that was approved. I don't know if that, that might have been mitigation. Um, and so it is already protected, whereas, and Ms. Kendrick, I, I hate to ask staff to do extra work, I know you're overloaded and, uh, but if you could see if there is some existing protection for that, just because, you know, it is important, um, to us, um, there may be something we may not have to worry about, it may already be protected so that if they did a modification to their building and it comes, you know, they come for a building permit, it's already codified.
Absolutely. And one of my concerns was this, that, that the Lincoln marker is not part of the, that application, it's not part of the proposal and typically we don't condition.
Yeah.
Master's sign plans, but what, what we can do is, um, we can reach out to the property owner. Um, I, I've had some dealings with the property owner that have been positive and working with him and trying to get something recorded against the property that indicates that this is there and, um, try to protect that in another way that's not associated with this application.
Okay, that, yeah, that's the best we can do because it is not, uh, part of, you know, we don't have the authority, but I appreciate you do the, uh, and, and, you know, uh, reporting back to us, um, you know, what, what exactly you were able to work out. Okay. So, anything else about, we, I think we've.
I can't think of any.
We've done as much as we can on the Lincoln Highway.
Yeah, but what the, the pink, uh.
The pink, yeah.
Strictly is forbidden. It just.
Yeah.
It, it, it's not necessary and it clashes and it sticks out to, like, the proverbial sort of.
You know, I look, Elizabeth's got this open and, you know, I see this, and if this building was anyplace else, that would be fine, because it, it doesn't not fit with the architecture of this building. But when you think about what's on the other side of the parking lot and what's across the street, oh my gosh, I, I, yeah.
Quickly, I kind of assumed that the picture was not the accurate, like, representation of the color, so looking at it now as if that is the color, I agree that it's a little out there. Um, the green, I think, is beautiful and it's in a bold way that still attracts attention, so I'm sure they have some options.
I, I kind of disagree, um, not in a hard, hard way, but, um, we talked last meeting about how to revitalize downtowns and how to keep people in business. And so while maybe that tone of pink you guys don't like, um, I, I think highlighting that that building is there, they've lost their pole sign, it's hard to, that, that business has turned over a lot in the last couple of years. It is a large space to operate in and maintain. And so I'm actually really not as offended, I think, by the pink as you guys because I think it draws attention to that building. Um, so, well, two things is, one, I think they could pick, I don't know, we didn't get a swatch of it, it might just be, you know, a insertion digitally of it and they put it up and it's a nice pastel pink. I really don't have a problem with that. I do think that this, um, building needs all the help it can get. Um, and it's got parking, it's a really great building and it has had a really, a lot of struggles. And we talk all the time about wanting to support businesses and looking to be fair and allow people to do what they want. Um, so I'm actually not offended by the pink and I think that if they wanted to do something to draw attention, like I said, they've lost their pole sign, there is not a large way for people to see it. Um, and so I think if they want to paint it pink, I don't have a problem with it. I think especially you have a farmer's market there each Wednesday, it draws attention to that building. So I think blending it in is actually, um, like, a hurt on the business. I think it's nice that they can draw attention to themselves. So, um, that's my opinion on the pink. And, sorry, one last thing is that, um, for the signage, um, I'm in favor of continuing it as well because I do think the signage needs to be massaged. Um, however, I'd like to relay, my personal opinion would be that, um, we could consider going up to two hundred feet for the same reasons I just described, to allow them to have, well, two things, I think that we could, the one sixty-nine, I think, is a good allowable amount, but if they were to have some wonderful design that takes them closer to the two hundred, I'd be willing to consider it for the same reasons I just stated, to allow them to have visibility, to allow them to have advertising that sufficiently draws the eye to that building. Um, and second, I think that they could definitely massage that back where the vibe never dies to be a mural and be eliminated from the overall signage consideration, um, something a little bit more, like, we've talked, you know, um, with the whole public art thing, like, maybe they could incorporate something that's more relevant to Placerville or things to eliminate that fifty-six square feet, get closer to the two hundred, um, with their other three signs that draw attention to their brand. And, um, and I'd be willing to consider that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I, I just want to push back, uh, let's see, the, the two hundred square feet, that's, um, no, I, um, if they come back requiring or saying they want more, uh, they have to provide us with the, um, strong findings.
Yes.
I don't, I, I actually think, um, the amount allowed is sufficient.
Mm-huh.
And I really am uncomfortable, uh, going up, uh, any higher than a hundred and sixty-nine. I, you know, I'd have to see the whole package and, um, like I said, have very strong findings.
Yes.
And the, where the vibes never die, um, yeah, it would, if they want to do that as a mural, it would, yeah, have to be decorate, absolutely decoration, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
No coffee cup, no.
I'm saying they should not return to us with an application over two hundred feet. Um, and I'm saying if they want to go over the one sixty-nine, I'd like them to bring something that's compelling. That's what I was trying to say. I don't know if I said it well, but, um.
I think, maybe I got a little confused, so.
Yeah, so I'm saying is, don't come back with something over two hundred because we're not, that's not, so, that's a waste of time for them. And, um, and second to that is to really consider adding a mural, um, to eliminate their, that's fifty-six square feet right there that they would eliminate from their total amount. Um, and think about making that something more, less, uh, less words, less, less logo and more beautiful, because again, it is a huge side of a building. It's very blank, um, when it's not painted. Um, and so I really, I think it would be wonderful if they, and we talked about this when we had this last application, they could be great if they added actual public art onto the side of this building. Right now, it's four signs. I think they could massage the three signs down to, at a maximum, two hundred, and then think about incorporating public art that draws attention to their building, draws eye to your, their coffee sign and also beautifies the city. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I agree with you. I think that definitely could be a mural, because in my mind, if they were to leave the building, that could stay and people will still be coming by and taking pictures with it. I think it adds like a, a useful.
It's like the Studebaker, or not, the, the Snowshoe Thompson, right? Like, it's perpetual.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, and it can be, it's not like they're damaging the building by having it there. Um, so I, I agree with what you were saying and, um, had the same thought of removing that from their square footage and.
Making it art.
Yeah.
Mm-huh.
I guess a couple of questions come to mind.
Oh, before I turn it back over to you, did you have any comments, Catherine?
No, actually, um, Vice Chair Leffler just articulated my sentiment about this really nicely, so.
Great vibes.
Yeah, I mean, um, I mean, I was, I was, I thought a lot about the pink. Um, and I drove up and down the street and, um, you know, I, I think that, you know, they're really dealing with a large building and there is, it's very highly visible because of the parking lots on both sides and it's very plain on the sides. And, um, I mean, I, I don't think that the pink doesn't work. I mean, you know, the, these, these color choices are very compatible with other colors that, that we see throughout Placerville, so, and, um, I, I like the kind of retro vibe, you know, youthful vibe. I know that it's, it's kind of on the edge of, you know, the kind of gold rush vibe that we're, that we go for in the historic downtown, but, um, I don't think that it's, um, I think that it's complementary to a lot of the buildings in that area. Um, because, you know, you do see bright colors along that stretch of, of Main Street. So I think that, um, but I, you know, I'm not opposed to them toning it down and maybe, you know, bringing, making the signs a little bit smaller so that it's, um, you know, coming more in line.
It could be allowable amount, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that they could make it look really nice, um, so.
Kirk, back to you.
Um, I guess one of the concerns I'd have is for us to focus on consistency and standards so that the next applicant who comes in, or the string of applicants that come in, have some expectations about the standards that would be used. In the case of the color palette, uh, that design standard is on the books for us, but it is not compulsory. Uh, the idea that they'd be earth tones. So what they, remember the public said was about different shades, like, for example, uh, terracotta or desert rose or salmon. So there's different shades. I happen to like pink, it's my favorite color. But the question is about where it's at. And if we say yes to this person, what happens to the next applicant that comes along? Uh, the other thing I'd mention on the subject of the color palette is even though it's guidelines, we, this body has imposed it in the past. There was a tire shop on Placerville Drive that wanted to put bright red. Uh, this body said no. And they changed it to a different shade of, of red that was deemed to be more compatible so that it wouldn't stick out. So I guess the concern I'd have is whatever you come up with, think of some standard that could be applied to the next one, it wouldn't be inconsistent. We did, after all, just a few months ago, say the string lights were garish and if you have bright pink, that word was used. It was used.
Okay.
Uh, but, 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 but if you have a bright pink, most people would think of that as garish. On the subject of the mural, again, the murals that we have so far in town have historic themes. Uh, Snowshoe Thompson, and there was some years ago, uh, Dave Becker's building, the law firm, had on that first level, uh, music store and they wanted to put in a mural. They were given permission to do it without regard to specific design. But they could have come in and put in historic figures playing various musical instruments. And there was nothing that would have stopped anybody from letting them do it because they already approved, go ahead and do a mural. So when we approve artwork, we want to know, I would think, some standard in advance as to what it's going to be, the size, the dimensions, what the theme is. So again, it's because it's not just what we do for this property, it's are we going to do something that's going to lock us in for consistency with some other applicant in the future? That's just.
You just raised an interesting question and, and Ms. Kendrick, I hope I'm, I'm, maybe we're adding on to your workload, the idea of a mural. So, uh, Mr. Smith just said, um, approval of a mural. So if this applicant did say, okay, I'm taking out the, the vibes and I'm going to turn it into art, would they come back to us for approval for that or is that, uh, more open-ended?
It, it's open-ended.
Okay, so, uh, that would be up to them, their discretion, what it is they want to put on the side of their building as art, not advertising.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I did have the thought after we discussed, um, where the vibes never die, if that were to become trademarked per se, would that become an issue with it being a mural?
It's not, it can't be a mural. It's signage. So where the vibes never die is not an.
Would have to be removed altogether.
It's not an option for them. That is a sign, not a mural. What I was saying is that if.
If they decide they want to use it, they've got to.
Well, yeah, if it's within their, if it's within their allowable amount, they can totally have it. But when I talk about a mural, and we talked about this, sorry about that, um, about Rocker Oysterfellers, we talked extensively about how they can have art on there if it is alluding to shellfish. we talked extensively about how they can have art on there if it is alluding to shellfish, like New Orleans. There was a couple of things that they had.
Three circles, yeah.
Their three circles were directly related to their business, which caused it to be a sign. So it does not have to be an historic mural. It just has to be art that is not directly related to sociology coffee. So it, they have flexibility. They don't have to paint a gold rush mural. They can just beautify their building, take up some of that stuff, and have it not be related, in this case, to coffee. And that would be acceptable as public art. Yeah, which is something that the city is pushing for. My girlfriend, who was on the commission, is part of that whole movement. And there's a group of people really trying to get people to do art. It does not have to be historic, yeah.
So there's no review process for public art on private buildings?
That's a separate topic. And there's the master art plan, and I can send you a link. The city has adopted it. It took a lot of community involvement, but that's separate from this discussion right now. So if they decide to do art, then they're over on, under our master art plan.
Got it.
So, yeah, and yeah, it's good reading. Anyway.
It was, it's good.
So I'd entertain a motion to.
Mr. Clarity, I wanted to make, I'm using those other examples as what they were, but not to say that the mural has to be gold rush or anything of the kind. It can be thematic of the shellfish and all around.
Yeah, you know, the hour's getting late, let's not get bogged down in that. So let's keep it to the master sign plan before us. So I entertain a motion to take action on this?
And I will say, I just, I like the pink. I think, I would like to make a motion that we continue this application. Does it need a date certain?
Yes, it would be best if we do a date certain. So what I'd recommend is October 7th.
Okay.
Because that'll give me time to work with the applicant and have him make any changes to his site plans. And then we don't have any items for the second meeting in September. So just in an effort to save time, I'd recommend October 7th.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we continue this application to a date certain of October 7th. Do I, should I include the direction that we have, or is that going to be relayed by you?
I will work with the applicant, and I will also send him a link to this video.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to make a motion that we continue this item until the date certain of October 2nd, 2025.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second from Ms. Stratton. All right. Ms. Watkins Howey, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Stratton?
Aye.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lepper?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Chair Keeney.
Aye. And I apologize, I didn't allow anybody else to have further comment after we had the motion and a second. Anybody have anything else to say about this? I think we hashed it out. We, we'll get another chance when they come back. All right. My apologies for that. Didn't think there was any new ground there.
I do have one question, though. You mentioned that there was another, that there was a prior review of, was it for this applicant, or for?
No, it was from the, it was actually Brandon Gunther.
Okay, the Rocker Oyster.
When it was, right. And so that's on file, if you wanted to take a look at that.
Okay.
The 169.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, great. All right. We have no continued items tonight. New business to discuss?
Nothing to report, no?
No new business listed on the agenda. So we'll move on to matters from commissioners and staff, 12.1, staff reports. Do you have a report? And Ms. Kendrick, I'll turn it over to you for that.
Okay, great, thank you. So with the city council meeting that occurred last week, the Development Services Department did bring a few items forward, including an assessment of the fire gates. And there was, actually last week, it was a full house for another reason, but we did get some discussion on the fire gates, and I received direction from the city council. So I'll be working through those on, looking on which ones we want to entertain removing and other ones that we want to remain in place. I also brought forward the comment item regarding the LCI guidelines for reviving downtowns and Main Streets. So I got, received some direction from the city council, and we did provide comments to LCI Thursday before the deadline. And then we did provide our July monthly report for DSD. We're, we're doing pretty good as far as our department statistics go. And on another note, not sure if any of you have worked with Natalie Toran Niska. Probably said that wrong, but she has been appointed the interim Director of Finance in Dave's, as Dave moves up to city manager next month. So I know Natalie, I think, started in development services, so some of you may be familiar with her. But if you see her, wish her a congratulations. And I did send to the planning commission the link to the California League of Cities Planning Commissioners Academy, PowerPoints for the last few years. That is something that I've attended regularly and found very helpful staff. It is generally attended by staff, planning commissioners, city managers, attorneys. We don't have any training budget at this point, but there is a wealth of knowledge in, in those presentations. So if you have any questions, please let me know, or something that you feel would be a topic that we could bring up for the entire commission to discuss, I'm welcome, I'm welcome to entertain that. And that's all I have at this point. And again, we don't have any items scheduled for the next planning commission, so, meetings. So we'd be looking at our next meeting being October 7th.
There's tremendous outreach and education, so I'm sure there's going to be a lot. And you are going to attend, or you're just, it's informational?
I don't know if I'm going, going to attend. It would be out of pocket, so.
At a pricey, okay.
And I'm going to be house poor. But I am attending next month the APA conference in Monterey. I am paying for that out of my own pocket, but I will be bringing back a lot of information to the planning commission. And I will give you a staff report on all the things I've learned and, you know, what are new and upcoming topics in the planning world.
Wonderful. All right.
I may be, it's funny that, that you sent that out, because I'd just already spoken to my husband. I may attend the planning commission conference for the California League of Cities in March. I'm just waiting for the, for the, the agenda to come out. So I talked to, because I, I can do it under my business.
Right, and I did look at what the cost would be per person. And so if, like I said, if it's something where somebody's going to drive and we carpool, and, you know, that helps reduce costs, definitely open to talking to you each individually about that.
Okay, great. Let's move on. Oh, go ahead, Kirk.
Well, I don't know if this is a transition to the second topic or yours. But earlier you talked about the market on Main and suggested that if we had some input to address it with you. And I can tell you that over, over the last couple of years, there's various times when I've asked that we have the city attorney with us, because I think that some basic concepts about administrative law would be helpful. And so I don't know if that's what you meant, but market on Main would come back to us as a contested matter, likely, or could. And I know that the first meeting I ever went to, the planning commission, 15 something odd years ago.
So Kirk, I think you must be leading us into 12.2. You have a concern? I hadn't really opened that. I thought you were going to comment on something that Ms. Kendrick had presented.
You want to switch it into the second one? Doesn't matter.
Um, well, okay.
It was raised before.
I'm sorry.
It was raised before.
I, I'm, it's my priority to announce 12.2. So Kirk, if you.
Madam Chair, I think you said not to discuss it then, so I don't know when.
You have a concern about the market, so.
Chair.
It's about procedure. It's about procedure.
Chair, if I may, what, to clarify, it was to reach out to me individually, to give me any background. I have talked with senior staff and management about potentially getting the city attorney maybe to attend or, you know, potentially do a training. I will, I will talk with the city manager further and see if that's something that the, the city can accommodate. I see the invoices, so I, you know, I think we're very conscientious about utilizing city attorney time. But yeah, I was just saying, if, if you wanted to reach out to me individually and provide comments, then I'm.
Okay.
Just to make it clear, I have great respect for you, your talents, your background. Welcome breath of fresh air. I just think that this is a reoccurring issue. And the fundamentals are, it would be ex parte communication for us, I believe, to participate at this stage. That's all. The first time I ever went to a planning commission meeting about 15 years ago was property on Cedar Ravine and Marshall Way, now used as an insurance structure. And one of the commissioners approached me during the break and asked me, how should we decide this? That, that kind of thing, I'm not sure is uncommon. I just think that it would be helpful if we had some refinings on the generic subject of those basic rules that go beyond the Brown Act. That's all.
I will bring that up with the city manager.
Okay. So we'll move on to 12.2, which is planning commission matters. So this is our opportunity to update one another. And so under 12.2, we have 12.2.1, which is the historic design guidelines. And this is the work plan. And Alyssa, you updated this. So why don't you walk us through the updates?
I did, thank you. So I went through the narrative that Commissioner Lepper provided, which was extremely helpful. I do still have a few gaps in knowledge that might be helpful to fill in just for context and to see like, oh, this has already been discussed, it's already been closed, whatever. So I was hoping, pretty much each page is the different objectives laid out by the city council. I was hoping that we could use it at each meeting, and I'll keep it updated as like, just to help facilitate the discussion of what we planned on talking about, what should come up soon, who's leading what. So we're all on the same page.
It's beautiful. Thank you for doing this. I think it really helps to give clarity into each piece that we've talked about, rather than having just the kind of jumble that has been happening. So I really appreciate it. I'll say that my only update that I have is, that I'm not going to talk about tonight, is I did work earlier this year on some website language and updates and kind of trying to pull things from all the different areas into one. I just haven't circled back just due to time constraints. So at the next meeting, I will try and flush that out a little bit more and present what I have, which I can't remember if I've presented it. I think I have earlier in the year. But re-present it and flush it out a little bit more, which will fall in line with your website, the website improvement to educate the public. I'll also commit to reading through and seeing if there's any updates I have from memory or from documents on your status and assignments and such.
I had a couple of corrections and questions about the update. On page one, notes on procedure, it says, spring 2024, the full planning commission should be included in discussions rather than a special or subcommittee. I, I'm afraid, I don't like the word full. I think I'd just rather have a quorum, have it read a quorum of the planning commission. Because if we, yeah, we have to, if we have, require everyone to be here, we risk not moving forward. We have had people vacation, illness, whatever. And I, you know, I think we, we're working on this. We need to keep going on that. And then another correction on page three, 1B, list of SOI standards and approved materials for homeowners. You have Mr. Smith listed there, and I thought I was going to do that. So Kirk, was that something you were going to take on? It's on page three at the top. 1B2, list of SOI standards and approvable materials for homeowners? Because I thought, I thought I had volunteered for that, and maybe I'm misremembering.
I think I actually have that on a different page. This was referring to us providing the homeowner with a list of things that say, yes, we will approve this, which was discussed as something that we didn't want to do.
Okay, so.
As opposed to a one-pager that summarizes the SOI standard document. Let me see if I can find it.
Okay.
If you look at the first page, objective, that it describes. Yeah, it describes that this is all related to improving community knowledge of the historic neighborhoods. Then we have to go down to another objective for the one that you were going to do.
Yep. Let me see if I can find it.
Current standards for.
My memory.
4D.2, develop SOI cheat sheet.
Yes, so that is you, Chair Keeney, and.
I'm sorry, what page is that, seven?
Seven.
So.
And also.
4D.2.
Just for how you're managing this, if something has been decided that we're not going to do it, are you just going to take it off entirely?
I actually wanted to ask you guys about that.
Okay, because that one is something that, from my understanding, my memory, and watching all of the videos over again, that we are not going to develop an approved list of materials because of the fact that they change flow and are really hard to upkeep. That was talked about numerous times with the example of Grass Valley and all these things. But from my understanding, that is not something that we plan to do anymore because.
Keep it on the list, maybe.
Right, and like close it.
I could do like another page of closed activities.
Yes, I think that would be really nice to memorialize, but not have them be in the active workflow. I think that would be helpful. So that's like an example of one that could be closed. But not, you don't have to eliminate, yeah, like I said, memorialize it somewhere as a, we did it, we looked at it, and it's not happening.
Right.
I guess the question is, why is it necessary to list materials? When a much more fun about a question is the basics about if you have fire resistant materials that are fire resistant or fireproof, and they look like the original, can they be permitted to be used? If that's the case, then it allows for you to consider updated material. I just saw some advertisements about windows, insulated windows, that are much different from vinyl. So it supports what you've just said, which is the technology is always changing. But I've never heard us address those basic issues. If, for example, it comes to double-pane windows, what is the standard? Is it going to be, can it be any kind of, any kind of window that's double-pane? Vinyl, aluminum, wood? So if it looks like what it replaces, that should be a standard. And that's one of the things they suggested can be covered in a workshop, where you simply ask that question and get the public to provide their knowledge and expertise. But those are some questions that I saw reoccur over the last 12 years.
My understanding is that the sustainability standards put out by the S I, SOI answered those questions. The sustainability standards from 2024, I believe, the SOI standards, which incorporate sustainability and sustainable materials, answered that question for us, that we're allowed to consider fire safe and modern materials within historic districts that comply with the needs of homeowners while keeping the look, which is what we've all agreed to do anyway. So I don't see any need for an updated list or additional lists.
We can roll that into 4D2, the developed SOI cheat sheet, really refer to that update on sustainable materials.
And I can add a note on to the informational workshop, Rose, that that is a topic that's under consideration.
Okay, I believe we should take public comment on this, right? Okay, Mr. Drobisch? If you would, given the lateness of the hour, I'm going to ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, if you can.
Okay, well, I can bring in building materials and samples and describe their uses if anyone. and samples and describe their uses if anyone is interested. You know, give you just a little breakdown of how they're used, where they're used, why they're used. And then my opinion of how appropriate they would be for a historic district or a given structure. I don't know where on the agenda that would.
Well, I, you know, that's a fantastic offer. And what I, I guess I'd like to ask is that if maybe you could sketch that out and maybe give a, a time, amount of time to do a presentation, we, and then work with Ms. Kendrick to see if we can roll that into an agenda under, you know, some sort of presentation. We, we do that regularly. So that would be, you know, I think we can make that work. Again, I, I hesitate to make more work for staff, but this is an ongoing concern. So thank you. That would, that would be very helpful.
It could be just a five-minute presentation and five minutes of Q and A. Just boom, boom, you know, some sighting samples one week and another time roofing samples.
Yeah, so, yeah, an outline of, you know, what is available. Again, how much time you think you would like to devote to it so that it can be scheduled in with other work? I think that would be, yeah, very helpful. Thank you.
And then just given a statement about the SOI sustainability addendum, has that been adopted by the city or does it need to be?
I.
Has the city adopted the SOI, a very specific document?
That's an interesting question. I don't see why they would not since it's an update to, you know, it clearly states that the preamble, if you will, or the introduction to that, that it's an update to the existing standard. So I don't know why the city would not rely on updated information.
I see what you're saying, the code actually calls out the title of the document, which has changed, so.
It's just a technical question that we get ironed out before we go further down that road. And then just a quick question, who is the designated Planning Commission Secretary? It's supposed to be appointed by the director.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question?
Who is the planning commission's appointed secretary?
That would be Ms. Howie Watkins.